Meeting of the Board of Finance to order. It's a special meeting Wednesday, March third, two thousand and twenty one. Going to go ahead and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay, thank you. You've all probably had a chance to review our agenda item or agenda for tonight's meeting is pretty short. Doesn't mean the meeting will be, but let's do what we can to go through this expeditiously. Our first agenda item after the call to order is public speak. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak?
We have an iPhone that just joined us.
No name associated with it. It's your opportunity, or you can speak at the end. You tap on mute yourself. I don't see that. It looks like it's not muted, so, okay. Okay, I guess hearing no public speak, let's move on to item three, which is the budget workshop. Item three A is board and department presentations. Eric, are you going to handle this for us? Basically, do the run through?
So, um, I will. Several Board of Selectmen members have asked to do it, but they don't appear to have. For one reason or other been able to do that.
Well, we start our meetings on time and just make it that point.
Okay, so.
We did have Jeff Murray here.
I thought that was Jeff.
Maybe that's his iPhone.
So, the the first thing I would like to ask is, is there anything particular that you want to review? Or focus on before I give a essentially a general overview of the budget?
Anybody have anything particular for Eric? I know you'd asked that question last week. I know that, you know, I had talked about wanting to understand kind of what the impact was in the five year plan and somebody else had asked for. Clarification and some things or potential clarification. I remember exactly what that was.
I just have a quick question.
Shoot.
How much in this budget year did did the town get for COVID relief? Did the town get anything or does it all go a hundred percent close?
No, it doesn't a hundred percent go to the school. I think the town got a total of thirty one thousand dollars. In two allotments. Total of which we have not spent very much of. We have reimbursed, so we had asked. Various different departments within the town what their expenses related. So the only group that we've reimbursed that I know of is I know we've reimbursed the library. For their COVID related expenses, which was basically putting up the shielding. And a few other things that they were required to do before they reopened under the governor's executive orders.
Okay.
So we also spent about four thousand dollars out of that money on. We put towards the combined finance office and equipping them. Getting the IT support to be for them to be able to function regardless of where which office they're in. That was one of the requests from the school that because they were. Took on the majority cost for acquisition of the software that they asked us to reimburse them for that, which I thought was reasonable and agreed to.
We don't think we're as a town that we're going to get anything this year, right?
It does not look like it. The only funding that was identified early on for the town was Esser funding. Which is strictly school related, not town related.
Okay.
And there's some question whether we're even going to get that. It sounds like maybe we're not.
Okay.
So my suspicion is what we've got now is, you know, what we're going to get in terms of that. For for funding.
Eric, if I if I could say, we're going to need to find a storage area for all of the PPE and cleaning supplies. That we have stacked up in our meeting room at the fire station. Most of this equipment will be received through the, you know, through our EMS system. And they made sure that us in the town were were totally prepared. PPE cleansers, all that, everything's there. We're going to need to find a place to stockpile that for the the next pandemic. That never happens, but it's going to have to all get to one central location. I'm sure I'm sure the school has some also. And maybe even a library that we're going to have to stockpile somewhere, so just just, you know, think about it. And it's a ways off before it happens, but we're going to have to do something.
Sure. Okay.
We'll put it in the new senior center building we're going to build.
Yeah, you'll fill up the basement.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So the the first thing I wanted to say is that if you look at the budget in broad strokes. Last year, there was a quite a bit of uncertainty. Because we were hiring a number of people and whenever you're hiring a bunch of new people. You know, we didn't really know where we were going to end up with benefits for them because it obviously makes a big difference between whether they're single. Or they have a family plan or whatnot. So we ended up better off than we anticipated. You know, when we did the actual hiring and we also were under on salary. In part because the hiring process takes a while, so there's always a gap in time when you're not paying for. For an, you know, an employee. So overall on salary and also I. Declined to advertise and hire a separate senior services coordinator. Which we built into that budget. I did that for two reasons. One, because of COVID, we weren't really able to offer any programming. And two, because I think it actually works pretty well keeping that assignment with the assistant assessor. It's a fair bit cheaper to the town, number one. And secondly, the the. Times when you need the most support there are different than the times when the assessor's office is working the hardest. So there's periods of time when the assessors' assessor's office is a hundred percent occupied. And there's times when they have slack. So it works well as a combo job there. The second thing is that with the combination of the finance office. The town is now really only required to supply salary and benefits to one individual. And even though Marina makes more than her predecessor at the assistant role considerably than Maureen Brancato. She also brings a lot more capability to the job, number one. And two, now we're paying for one person instead of two. So that has been the savings that we're able to project through in this budget. And the other thing is that we were able to further. Reduce the expenses in the tax collector's office. Basically, we've kind of worked out, we're still in union negotiations for it. But we're going to, that office is going to end up going down to average twenty six hours a week from thirty four. And there's going to be a change in essentially a change in benefits and a change in hourly rate. But the net savings to the town is about twelve thousand dollars over what we were doing before. So so that's fairly significant. From the town's perspective. The cost of insurance was fairly flat, although that also. Includes the fact that Kerma has dropped their cyber liability policy. So yes, their costs didn't go up, but. The the benefit portion of it dropped. So that's something, you know, we may have to revisit at some point in the past. The the bottom line is for the towns, what I call the operating budget. The which is the the town budget not including school, the the cost of education. And then not including what we are putting into capital funds has is decreasing about one and a half percent. And and that's that's due to a number of factors. We were able to tighten up a few things. You know, and and. Yeah, yeah. So so that's that's kind of the the town general operating budget. Where we did go up was in the capital funding, which is basically roads and bridges and culverts. And physical infrastructure. As I talked fairly extensively last year. You know, our biggest single issue in the town is the just the fact that we've we kind of underfunded. The physical infrastructure for a bunch of years and it's gotten to the point where it's. It's, you know, it needs some serious attention. We're assuming we're pushing out the work we're doing. And the intention is to kind of deal with it over the next fifteen plus years, so it's not a big hit all at once. Although I know the Board of Selectmen does want to consider bonding for some of the projects to accelerate that. We did get a kind of final wrap up report on all the town culverts. And kind of the bottom line with the culverts is we have five we need to address. Relatively quickly. Two, we should probably be addressing as fast as we can fund. And three more that that definitely need to be done within, you know, say the next ten years. So that's kind of where we're looking in terms of culverts. Right now, we have some money set aside for the Bunker Hill Bridge. And we have some more money that we're proposing to put into that this year. Which should probably leave about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to fund it the budget after this one. So so that project in total should should cost the town somewhere around four hundred thousand. We'll have a better guess or we'll have a better estimate when the engineering firm has completed. What they call the thirty percent portion of the bridge, which means the design is thirty percent complete. And they have they they're ready to basically present and we're going to pick. Which way we go in terms of bridge bridge design. And that has been delayed basically because the state. Didn't finish surveying before the the it got too cold. And since one of the things they have to do is kind of contour the riverbed, which involves somebody standing in waiters in the river. You know, with with the survey pole, they have elected to put that off till it's warmer, which is a little unfortunate, but. So we're moving ahead with some aspects of the design, but we're we're definitely going to be a little delayed. But probably not so much that we can't anticipate a start date next spring. As far as the roadwork goes, I've been working with Jay on the presentation. Of kind of what we're planning on doing for roadwork. And we're we're keeping very much the same motif that we did last year. Other than, you know, we're we're just, we're changing up the order. We do things a little bit. And, you know, we're trying to get a little more. You know, economical with it. I mean, the reality is, you know, we're. We're many millions of dollars in the hole on roadwork because we underfunded that for, you know, twenty plus years. And so what we're looking at doing is that what kind of compromises can we make? Because some of our roads are bad enough that, you know, they're, you know, the potholes are substantial enough that that they're. You know, they're, it affects their drivability. So we're looking at, you know, essentially chip sealing, doing a lot of chip sealing. But doing a lot of shimming and filling in some of the really bad depressions and kind of doing it systematically. And then doing a section of the town each year with the goal of, you know, in the next four or five years, at least getting all the. The the major defects and then putting out an ice cap, by the way, and then putting off the. Most reconstruction work because that's so expensive. We're going to have to do just a very small amount of it each year. Just because the cost per mile to to reconstruct a road is, you know, somewhere around three hundred grand. And we just don't have the the funds to reconstruct a lot of what we need to. Other than that, in terms of capital, we're the Board of Selectmen is proposing. To fund the fire department seventy five thousand dollars for their capital equipment. Which was less than what we originally requested, but there's currently about thirty three thousand dollars in that account right now. So that is enough that we should be able to purchase everything that was on their priority list. You know, we'll run the account back down to zero, but they'll have the stuff they need to to work with for now. What else?
Eric, correction on that. You're talking about the the first three of the five on the priority list, correct?
Correct, correct.
There's five items that the long term and the selectmen decided to, we asked for the number one. And the selectmen decided to fund one, two, and three, but there's still four and five coming later on down the pike. That's I think what everybody should know.
Right, but not in this current.
No.
In follow on budgets.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. And and obviously, we know there's going to be a large ticket item at some point. When they go to replace the older. You know, what do you call that big toolbox?
The 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 older two trucks, the oldest two trucks, the ninety one, the ninety one and the ninety eight.
Yeah, so we know we are going to have a big expense for that coming down the road. Because one of the vehicles at this point is thirty years old and as you well know, at some point, it starts getting very hard to even get parts. Due to the age of the equipment. The other thing we're funding again this year is we're funding tree work. The Board of Selectmen's proposing to fund that at fifty thousand dollars. We left about fifteen thousand dollars in that account unspent last year. Just because we'd had so much storm damage, we were afraid a really big windstorm. You know, would put us in the in the hole for a lot of emergency work. So given that that's not. Probably an issue right now that gives us effectively about sixty or sixty five thousand dollars to spend this year. On tree work, which gets us about the equivalent amount as we did last year. Last year, we hired a a company with basically what's called the grapple saw. And we hired them because their cost per tree is their cost per day is much higher. But the the equipment is so much more capable and so much faster than a bucket truck. They get three or four times more work for the same amount of dollars. I think conservatively, we still have seven or eight hundred dead trees on the side of our roads that we need to address. With a little luck, we can get four to five hundred of those taken care of this year and then keep chunking away. We've chosen because we had limited funds to to not really take all of the ash, just take the ash that's already dead. But you can see a lot of the stuff even that we passed over the last year is already blonding pretty badly. So it's likely to be dead in the next year or two. So I would expect for at least the next three to four years, we're going to need a really. You know, healthy capital budget for for tree removal.
Did we have a lot of trees come down yesterday? In town?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we were fortunate in that, well, I mean, we were fortunate and unfortunate roughly. A little over a third of the town was without power due to various different and then more later. Because of an issue in in Coventry. Yeah, we had, we had lines broken in probably ten spots, something like that, not including individual leaders to people's houses.
Right, right.
And we had, I think, one, two, three, four public works cleared, I think, five. You know, full or partial road closures because of of trees that weren't on the lines, but had fallen in the road and were blocking the road. Not too bad, but you know, not nothing either.
It seems to be the wind is getting us now, so it's not snow, it's wind.
Well, we're very vulnerable because, you know, we have so much dead stuff that that's sitting there that. That we're, you know, we're in a very vulnerable spot. So the other big thing that really affects this budget badly. Is the fact that the last three years or so, we have spent down our unexpended fund balance. Surplus. And we, like, for instance, last year, we put seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in. Between unexpended fund balance and also by taking older funds that weren't really being used. That had been created in the past and repurposing them and basically getting rid of cleaning out all the old funds. That really, you know, weren't accomplishing any purpose. So that's even if we had a level budget today, that would still be seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars more. That we had to raise through taxation if we had a perfectly flat budget. So that's probably one of the biggest things that's affecting us. And it's actually more than seven hundred and eighty because if you remember at the end of the year. You authorized us to transfer a hundred thousand of the surplus from last year into this year's budget into the capital. So it's really eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars last year that we put in the budget that we don't have available for this year. And we can talk a little bit about that more later. We might be able to transfer a little bit, but we're not going to go anywhere near covering that gap. So those are kind of the big overall highlights. The town portion of the budget is about twenty seven percent of overall taxation. The remainder is the school spending. So so that's kind of where we're at. Do any of you have like specific questions? Or how do you want to approach reviewing this?
I I have one, Eric.
Sure.
I know I brought it up before. Do we do we have a specific grant writer in town hall? Or is that being done by whoever gets up the picks up the pen?
Um, I mean. You know, most of the big ones we've gotten, I've written. You know.
Well, the reason I reason I ask is, I mean, the expending our fund balance works both ways. I myself, when I was fire chief, Chief Cobble and now Chief Mike have, you know. Every year we we put in for fire act grants and any fire DEEP grants, things like that. And we get denied mainly is back under my tenure because the town had such a large fund balance. They look at it, they look at every every bit of funding the town has. So spending down the fund balance. Actually is a is a plus for us to, you know, to apply for grants and. I don't know if you know. My neighbor Suzanne Heisey Maynard, she is a retired grant writer for Oak Hill. Her and her husband both worked at Oak Hill. He was a, I think he I think he taught art or something there, but. They both were retired employees from that Oak Hill organization, very large. And she was the she retired as the grant writer and she has offered her services. She lives right right up the street here on Lake Road. Her husband Roger has since passed due to cancer, but she she has offered her services before. She actually looked at a couple of grants for us at the fire station. Again, getting turned down because of the town's fund balance was so, you know, so so large at the time, so she. I mean, if someone was to reach out to her, I I think she would don't probably donate her services because she would she wouldn't take anything from us. Even if if we did get the grant, you know, we wanted to pay her a certain percentage or something, she refused, of course. But she she did it for a living for Oak Hill, so. That's just just so maybe somebody with the town could reach out to and then she likes to get involved in the town and, you know, anything she can do, I'm sure she would, I'm sure she would help. Amanda knows her well, so she could even work with her, but the name Suzanne Heisey Maynard. And she's she's awesome, so. That's all I got to say about grants. We need we need to, we need to apply for grants. There there is a bunch out there, especially now. Just need somebody to go after them and I know I'm not saying for you or anybody else that's tied up with irregular jobs, but. We need a specific grant writer and even if we had to pay them a percentage of what they got for grants. It's, I think personally, it's well worth it, so. Just just a just a thought.
Can I just throw one thing in there? I I agree that we want to get every grant we can get, just with respect to the fund balance. I mean, for years now, I've been on this board for a while. And when I was first on this board, we had a fund balance of something like twenty two percent. Of the town budget and that was a target on our back and we understood that. And there's a reason why we accepted funding a bunch of things through our fund balance. Our unassigned fund balance and paying that down to get onto more or less ten percent. Which is what the state target is. And now we shouldn't have the target on our back because we should be right in line with what the state says we ought to have. The problem is, and I had this exact conversation at a Democratic Town Committee meeting recently. Is that we can't keep doing that. We're now at the point where we've spent it down. We're now at the point where we've hit. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, but ten, eleven percent, something like that?
Yeah.
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 We're done with that. Now, oh, Mark, your cat's awesome. Anyway, we need to deal with it through taxation. Or or grant funding or something else, but we cannot keep pulling continually.
No. Clearly, we spent that down and and that just that option is not really available to us.
I just want to throw that out there. I, I mean, like, it's great. I mean, if we have somebody in town who can help us get more grants, that's fantastic. But just from the from the simple kind of how that conversation started, it had to do with. Our fund balance and using it to defray things. And I'm just saying, like, we're kind of at the end of the road there.
Sure.
I I'm done, I'm good.
Yeah, just I'm not going to extend this because I think we need we need to move on, but, you know, Eric, you said one thing is hurting us. Well. The other way to look at it is one thing that allowed us. Avoid raising taxation more over the last.
Absolutely.
What usage of the fund bounds, otherwise it would have happened. So, you know, pointing it out, looking at it from the other end, that's that's a likely scenario. Okay.
Yeah, no, I I totally agree with that. You know, and I think we're getting closer each year to what we actually need to fund to run the town. You know, properly, you know, would be what, you know, and and we're still running pretty frugally. I mean, if you look at at what we actually expense for the town hall. You know, we're still running a pretty lean and mean operation overall. Are there always areas where you can improve and cut costs? Sure. Yeah. So I guess my question is, I I've given you all the written material and the the Excel spreadsheet. What else do you want to review or, you know, what? You know, what do you want to see? Do you want to go through it line by line, or how do you want to approach the town's budget?
I think we're gonna have to go through it at some point line by line, it doesn't necessarily need to be in meeting. Um I know that I haven't had an opportunity to do so. Um you know, your report's fairly thorough, so you know, you know, definitely read through that and looked at it. Um.
I mean, I've had a chance to go through everything line by line, I spent a lot of time. Over the weekend and this week going through it, and there's. It's not a whole lot of places to find some money. Except in the transfers section, the transfers into the funds.
Right, I mean, i- in truth, that is, you know, that's the only place where there's any been any growth. You know, in this budget, um. And that obviously it's somewhat elastic, you know, and I'll give you. Like, the board and selectmen and I had a long conversation about what. What we really needed to fund for the town, you know, building maintenance funds. You know, and I can tell you, I mean. I could run down two or three hundred thousand dollars worth of projects I would like to do at some point. Um and I can tell you what. You know, what I think right now at this very time, the biggest priorities are. But the way I look at it is, you tell me what I can, you know, what I have available. And I'll I'll come back to you with a wish list of what I think is most appropriate. You know, if I get forty five thousand dollars, that's what I'll spend, you know, if I had more, that's what I would spend, if I had less, that's what I would have spent. You know, and roadworks the same way, that's probably, you know, if you really think about it. Our biggest capital asset in this town is our road network. You know, combined between roads and bridges and culverts. There's somewhere about thirty million dollars worth of stuff. That the town owns that allows people to drive around and get from point A to point B. Um of that, just on the roadwork portion alone, we're about four million dollars in the hole. So the the question is really, how much can we get in any given year? You know, and and what parts of that can we tackle? Um and the other thing is, what will people accept? You know, when I say that, because we're switching to more and more chip seal. And lower cost preservation techniques, because we just flat out don't have the budget. To really repave very much. So we're going into this realizing that. You know, in the end, we're not gonna have beautiful roads. But we're gonna try to keep the roads serviceable and get to kind of like a uniformly serviceable road. You know, with a chip seal surface. Um you know, again, that's that's a budget where uh it's. It's a lot of money, um and the same thing with bridges and culverts. And we're talking about right now, funding bridges and culverts at about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, you know, so to put it in perspective. More than likely, Bunker Hill Road Bridge. Is gonna be, the town is gonna be out of pocket about four hundred thousand dollars to do that. Um the first culvert we're likely to address is on Hutchinson Road. That one should be somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars. And the one after that is gonna be the one on Lake Road by uh. Um by Basola. Um and that one's probably somewhere around a six hundred thousand dollar project. Um we will apply for state funding for that, we should be able to get basically fifty percent of the cost reimbursed from the state. You know, and after that, there's there's three more waiting to do. And we got, you know, two more small bridges. Um that I'm in the process of of picking an engineering forum to evaluate. Because our town engineers looked at them both and said, yeah, they got problems, but you know. Um I'm not insured enough to tell you. Uh you know, to put any kind of stamp or guarantee on the this bridge. So, so I mean. You know, again, that's funding where. You can decrease it, but that just decreases the rate at which we can can actually go after some of these problems. Um and I'll be frank with you that my goal. Is simply to be able to replace bridges and culverts. Before the state closes them and we can't drive over them anymore. That's my goal, um to stay ahead of state closure. Um I think we'll be able to do that on Bunker Hill. Um you know, that's still, that was downgraded last year, um. You know, to a three, it's a scale, you know, from one to nine. Um but the the bridge inspector for that said, said, you know, if we if we had another sinkhole appear in that. Um they would probably go through and either put a weight restriction on it or close it completely, so. Um hopefully, that doesn't happen in the next year. And we start the replacement before we actually lose the ability to to drive over it. And that's really my goal, I mean, it's not, it's not to do it for aesthetics. It's just to do it, you know, get these things. Um, you know, before they fail to the point where we can't drive over them anymore. Um so, you know, not a lot of fluff there, it it's a lot of money, but it's money we need to spend.
The money that we're putting aside for the road improvement fund at three hundred thousand.
Correct.
Is that? Three hundred thousand an annual number that we need to fit into our taxation budget every year? Because that's just gonna keep us status quo, it's not gonna get us. We're not getting ahead of the game with that, correct?
So if you look at it objectively, a really good rule of thumb is to plan on about ten thousand dollars. Um pour per centerline mile per year to keep your road network constant. Um in Connecticut, based on our our cost of uh you know, roads. Um you know, those are for rural roads, much less than the state, the state uses a number about ten times that high. Per lane for a highway, but. A local road with less traffic, that that's about the number you need to to stay stable. Um, you know, so every year. We're going to need between the the money we get from the state in town aid road. And the money we put into town into roadwork. We need to come up with a number somewhere around three hundred or three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Somewhere in that range is what the break even point is. And everything we can put in above that. Long term will go towards improving the quality of our roads. Um this year, we have one advantage, and that is we were able to get a steep grant. Um which we're we're using towards reconstructing. Uh a section, two sections of road. Uh one, the first section of Long Hill and the first section of Shoddy Mill, so we were able to get about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. In additional state aid for that one. Um so this year, all total, you know, we're looking at spending somewhere around five hundred and thirty thousand. So with a little luck, you know, we're we're gonna be gaining on the on the roadwork this year. Um which is a nice change. Um and we were able to gain a little bit last year. Um what we're doing is we're using a company and a program called Street Scan. Which does basically a an automated road evaluation. Um with the plan to do that every, you know, reevaluate the roads every three to four years. Just to make sure that, you know, what we're doing is really effective and is increasing the the uh. You know, the overall road quality. What I would say is that. We're going to succeed, but we're gonna succeed by giving up on. Uh essentially really smooth road surfaces. And we're gonna es- accept a chip sealed surface as kind of the default road surface in town. Um which is not completely popular. Um you know, definitely got some negative feedback from people who walk dogs on the road. Um definitely got some people feedback from kids, you know, from people whose kids like to skateboard. Because often that's too rough a surface to really skateboard on. Um you know, so it it's not ideal. Um but it will be serviceable, um and given the budget constraints that we have. I think we're we're really targeting serviceability, not, you know, perfection, if that makes sense.
Okay. Any other general questions for Eric on this?
I just have one other question, so. We're doing an increase in funding into the public works equipment fund from fifty five to hundred and ten. Correct, yes.
Yes, except that we.
Did we spend that money on the truck? All right, we spent that money already, right?
Uh no, we, we. We haven't spent the hundred and ten we're putting in.
Okay.
We we've certainly wiped out everything that we put in up to this point. That fund balance will be basically zero uh in a couple of days.
And that's because of the sweeper and the and the truck we just bought, right?
Correct, correct. Yeah, yeah, so we're we're basically wiping that fund balance down to zero. In fact, we're taking money out of town aid road to make up the difference, because we don't have enough in there to. To actually buy what we need right now to replace the truck.
Okay.
Um the other thing Diane, you had asked me to do at the last meeting was to. Uh bring the year to date expended column in the budget up to what we've actually spent. Um I pawned that off on Marina, um I have a copy to give you, I'll email it all to you. Um I would have given it to you before the meeting, but I just got it at like four this evening. Um so that that updates the year to date expended. The only thing I would say, though, is that this is a really weird year because of COVID. You know, and there's a few things that, you know, we've had to spend a lot more on. But there's a lot of things we just, you know. Like, I mean, the the senior programming, we really just haven't done any, I mean, we've spent almost nothing on that budget. Same thing with with the rec commission stuff. Um we really just, eh there's a lot of areas where. You know, we just can't spend the money right now, because we're not allowed to. So, so I I carefully looked at areas and and looked at. You know, not only our current expenditure, but what were previous years, you know, when we weren't really operating in that mode.
And one of the things I would like to know, I know it's gonna be hard to pin point it down before we have to improve this budget and everything, but. You know, get as close as we can on year to date to see if we have any excess money we haven't spent this year, so we can kind of figure out. How we're gonna end up at the end of the year. See if there's any money.
We're going to be. Yeah, I mean, I I would say conservatively, we're gonna have at least a hundred thousand dollars in surplus at the end of the year. Um, you know. Um just because we're gonna be considerably under in the benefits category. Um that's one spot we're gonna have a lot of money. We also, because the Board of Ed um ate the cost for. Um paying for the software admin's transition, we still have that whole fund. Uh that whole allotment untouched, which is thirty thousand dollars. Um and there's, and then we have the coronavirus relief money, which we haven't really touched. There's at least twenty thousand dollars in that. So I would say conservatively, we're going to underspend this budget in total. By, you know, at least a hundred thousand dollars and probably more than that. But there's there's a bunch of expenses that we just can't really fully forecast right now.
So it's up to us, if we want to decide to apply unexpended funds against this budget going forward.
Yes, so. So there is some excess in unexpended fund balance, because we didn't transfer. One hundred, we didn't get all the way down to just ten percent at the end of last year. Because, again, because we didn't really have a finalized audit. Um so we know without without doing the same thing we did last year, which. Was at the end of the fiscal year, transfer into the uh the funds, the capital funds. Um to to get rid of the excess money, not get rid of, but to repurpose the excess money. We can probably do that this year. Um, exactly how much I don't know, but I would be comfortable saying that there's probably about a hundred thousand. That could be repurposed at the end of the year. Um, you know, again, depends somewhat. Do we have any late snow events? Because that that can chew up money pretty fast, we definitely have some money left. Um in the the plow budget right now, we've only expended about forty five thousand in salt. Um and we still have some to go yeah in labor, um you know, and. And overtime for that budget. So there are definitely areas where, you know, we're we're considerably under. Um. Yeah, if that answers your question. I think we certainly could do what we did last year, which is transfer money in at the end of the year to the the funds. Um if I were to pick a fund, it would be probably Bridge and Culvert, because that's where we're, you know. Um that to me is the sketchiest um in terms of being able to fund Culvert work.
I'm shocked that you said that shocked. I think that one's pretty pretty clear. Alright, anybody, you know, when you look through the detail on this town budget. I mean, there's some big variations, but when you look at it, as Eric, I think it kind of explained in one of the previous meetings. A lot of the variations department to department is moving. The benefits out of the benefits category and then into the specific department, so that we can see, hey. You know, what is our building department actually costing us? What is our, you know, um. You know, what is our public works department actually costing us, not just the salaries, but also the benefits? So so there's some fluctuations there, they seem to be offset pretty straightforwardly. Uh there aren't a whole lot of variances, honestly, beyond that. At least that I that I see flagged as as things that I would be concerned about.
Yes, and if you all want the full full personnel cost breakdown. Um I can certainly provide that, um if you want all the the exact salary data for employees. Um, you know. I don't generally share that, because you you know, it's tied to individuals. And but but it is foible information, so. So I will, you know, if you want it, your, you know, I can certainly email that to you also.
Well, there's not much we can do with that, because it's really salary benefits and, you know, whatever we're giving people for a raise this year. And they have to have some kind of increase this year, so. There's nothing. You've already cut the positions that we didn't decided not to fill and things like that.
Yeah, so the the one thing I would say along that line is. Is the the one thing that's definitely in this budget that uh falls in um your uh realm. Exclusively is the salary increase for the town clerk. And the salary increases for the registrars. And the reason is that by charter, um the Board of Selectmen. Set the salary for employees other than those that are elected. Um so the town clerk and the registrar are both elected positions. So that's solely your discretion as the Board of Finance. Um it's murkier in terms of who gets to choose. Uh for the other town employees, because that's technically, you know, wages and benefits are are by charter set by the Board of Selectmen. Um, I'm not sure what would happen if you decided to overrule that, but. Maybe you could, um, but certainly for both the registrar's office and the town clerk. Uh, that is set by you. Um, the board of selectmen has made a recommendation in both those cases, but the final decision is up to you.
Eric, um, since I'm not looking at the spreadsheet at the moment. How much money are we talking about there?
Uh, for those two positions. Not a lot, um, and, and the registrar is basically.
Increased workload, right? I mean.
Yeah, it's, that's straight work. I would actually bet that probably Wally. Uh, right now is. Overall, probably making minimum wage. Um, you look at the number of hours it takes to actually do the job. Because the, the state is pretty radically up to the, the responsibility for that office in the last twelve months. And it's, it's somewhat unclear whether it's gonna stay at that same level. But certainly there's a lot of eh, push from the state to consider or to keep. You know, pushing absentee balloting and some of the things that really increase. Um, you know, and I can tell you the town clerk. This year during election season was in here basically seven days a week. Um, and it was enough that we had to hire her temporary assistant. Um, for about a month and a half, because she just physically wasn't able to process all the stuff that. Uh, needed to come out of her office. Um, so I, I think in, in the town's clerk's case. The uh, what she asked for was a six percent raise. Um, and the board of selectmen, you know, agreed to her uh rationale for it. Um, but it's kinda ultimately, it's up to you whether you think that's appropriate. Um, or not, uh, and you can certainly bring her in at one of the meetings and, you know, have her justify that i- if you so choose.
I guess what I'm getting at is how that translates to our overall. Budget, I mean, you know, the town budget, as you mentioned, was what, twenty-seven percent, you said?
Yeah, the town budget's twenty-seven percent of the total budget.
Okay, so we have this particular line item with a particular salary line going up six percent. And the overall impact of that obviously is a fraction. When is the last time we gave a raise to that position?
Uh, she did get a raise the year before. I think last year we granted two and a half percent raises to employees overall. Um, I think there have been some significant periods. Oh, where the town operated in austerity when none of the employees got raises for a bunch of years.
That's true.
You know, her salary objectively is still fairly low compared to. Uh, you know, her peers. Um, you know, and she has been the town clerk for, you know, twenty-one or so years. So it's not like, you know, we're in many ways blessed that we have a, a, a good town clerk. But, you know, six percent is still six percent.
Right.
You know, it's up to you to decide whether that's reasonable or not.
Yeah, that's the reason I ask is that six percent's a little eye-popping in. One year. But if we have a history of going back. You know, it's like with the teachers, you know. You have flat budget for three years and then you do a big increase, okay? But if, you know, we did an increase last year, you said two and a half percent, something like that. Okay, that's basically the reason I got this year. Okay, great, that's fine. I have no problem with two and a half percent raise. Um. Six percent raise is clearly something where you're trying to backfill. Where you did some, you know, you didn't. The idea is you didn't pay her enough before. Or extraordinary circumstances and granted COVID is that.
Well, I think, I think the, eh, this did get a lot of time, I think in the board of selectman meeting and discussion, and there was pretty, seemed to be fairly unanimous. I don't want to say unanimous, that may be a little strong, but. Really good support for, for such increase, given the workload and kind of what she's had to do.
So we're talking twenty-eight hundred bucks, which really doesn't.
It's, it's a rounding error Diane, I agree, I, I do, I agree. It's nothing compared to school budget.
Yeah, but, you know, it's, it's our duty to review these things, so there's.
Personally, I, I really don't begrudge it. I'm just saying, we know that we're under the gun, that we're. Pinching every single penny, cause we're staring down. Yeah, look, if we all, if we approve everything. What'd you say, Eric, was seven point six percent or something like that tax increase?
Yeah, which is a lot.
Which is, you know, flatly.
Eh, as, as presented so far, it's a seven point five eight percent increase in the mill rate.
Right, so seven point six percent, eh, I was rounding, but yes.
Yeah.
Seven point six percent. Is easily the highest increase. This town would incur since I live. I bought this house, I bought my house in two thousand and seven. Go me, great timing. Um, anyway. Um, but seriously, w- w- we all have to understand, right? We have to somehow get that number. Down. If we think it's gonna pass.
Well, we did one point seven six percent last year, Jimmy, there's no way.
Seven point five, whatever it is, seven point six, whatever. I am not allergic to public spending. This is not my issue. My issue is, I know this town. And I also know that. In one year to go that, that big a jump. That's dramatic. And in any town, that would be contentious. In our town, I think it's flatly unpassable, so therefore, and since our. Purview here is to produce a budget, is not only fiscally responsible and deals with the things the town needs to deal with. We have to present something that's passable. But we're in a position, unfortunately. Where frankly, twenty-seven percent of the town budget is actually under our control. And.
Well, well, that's not strictly true, because we do have some say over the Andover elementary school budget.
Okay, we have, okay, fair mark.
The town budget is more directly under, you know.
Right, we are clearly, we have clear control of the town. The town budget being twenty-seven percent and the town budget being pretty lean. I mean, we've, we've hacked and slashed this thing for years. This thing, eh, I mean. Sure, could we cut a few hundred bucks here or there? Yes, we can, we've done this. I, I remember doing it. Back when Adrian was on the board, and we sat here and we went through every line and we stripped out. Two hundred bucks here and three hundred bucks there, and we. Talied it. And we ultimately stripped. A few thousand bucks. Eh, of the town budget. And of course, as against the ed budget, it does almost nothing. So to me, I mean. I would love to see if we, if anybody here has a, a, a clear objection to anything that. Is in the town budget and you know full well that it's wrong by all means. But where do we go? The reality is, this is already lean. Where do we cut?
I mean, any significant cuts would have to be out of the capital budget. Cause you're, you're not really gonna practically make substantive. Cuts to the operating budget.
Operating budget is like this much, exactly.
Right, and, and you know, in truth, we've made. The, the cuts we've made so far, you know, have essentially limited. Uh, employee hours and, you know, we're basically. You know, the, the cuts now are limiting services to taxpayers. And, you know, maybe that is a discussion we have. And, you know, maybe long-term we end up with the town hall open less hours. You know, um. You know, and, and maybe that's a solution, eh, I mean, I'm, there's never, it's never impossible to cut. Budgets, you can always cut things. The question just becomes what level of service. Do you wanna provide, you know, and, and are you willing to, to deal with the repercussions for. You know, lowering services and is it appropriate?
Right, and, and this brings me back to the old issue that is long dead with the stripper. You know, we, we proposed cutting it, people didn't wanna cut it. Okay. But that was a significant line item, it remains that, I mean, depending on who we get for a permanent stripper, whatever. Yeah. Um, at the end of the day, the, the task wanted that service. However you wanted to find that service, they wanted that service, and they were willing to pay for it, fine. So, you know, the same deal with the town hall. Do we wanna pay for the town hall but only have it open Monday through Thursday? Right now we have what, half-day Fridays, Eric, am I right?
We're closed Fridays.
You closed Fridays, god, I forgot. Okay.
Yeah.
There you go. But you could, you could further reduce.
You can, you can, and like, for instance, we have given up on having evening coverage Monday nights in the building department. Um, just because I tried it for a couple of months to see whether I could get away with it. Um, and not too many people complained, so I said, fine, we won't fill that. You know, and we're going through that now with the uh, tax collector's office. Um, so in the non-collection months, she'll be, you know, there three days a week instead of four. Um. You know, and eh, there are some cases we can do that. But there, there's le- limits obviously, and you also have to accept the fact that we have to. Attract and retain staff. Um, and at some point you make conditions. Uh, a- and let's be perfectly honest, our turnover the last few years has been very high. I mean, if you think about the employees in the town hall that have been here for, say, four years. You have Carol Lee. You have Roberta Doherty. Um, and that's it for the full-time staff. Everybody else has been here less than that. Um. Because we're, you know. It's not a slam dunk that Andover's necessarily a place you wanna, uh, you know, you work. Um, so I, I think we have to be a little careful, you know, because eh, I can tell you that, you know, there've been. Um, you know, we're low enough on the salary scale that. Um, I've had positions where I've hired the fourth person I've asked to take the job. Cause the first three wouldn't take the offer. You know, so it's, it's not like we're, you know, you know, we're living high on the hog. Um, are there places to cut? Sure, but, you know, now the cuts hurt, eh, and it's just a question of what. You know, i- if you're at the point where you have to do it, then you do it, but if you don't, you know, you don't, that's my take on it.
Agreed. Eh, I mean, all those points are the things that I'm rattling around my brain when I think about how we square the circle. How we get to a budget that can pass. That incorporates. The school budgets we're getting. And the town budget, which has no slack at all. I mean, I, I know, I've been on this board long enough to know, Eric, there's almost no slack there at all. Almost. I'm sure we can cut a few hundred bucks. That's not the point.
Eric, is there any, is there any funding for the senior, senior center here? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I get, well, you're saying transfers in multi-use building.
We have, we have, we have four fifty in the capital fund, right?
Yeah, so I think we had.
Fifty thousand going in this budget.
Trans, multi-use building.
Yeah.
That'll get to five then?
Yeah.
Yeah, nine oh seven, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I remember there being four fifty last.
Right, you know, we spent out of the, we, we had put four fifty in it. We spent about three thousand dollars on furniture for the community room. To kind of uh, give the seniors some place to call home until such time as a new facility. Uh, comes up.
Okay.
But eh. So the building committees, we have the senior center building committee is gonna come to you guys. For money this year, in this budget year, to do conceptual drawings, so. We need to take money from that and replace it, so we're not, because that building's gonna cost well over a million dollars.
We'll have to find other money for it.
Right, so we'll have to figure out.
Cause we got about half a mil, maybe, in, in fund balance for it.
Right.
You know, we've got four hundred and fifty thousand currently. Four hundred and forty-seven, the idea was to add fifty thousand in this budget. But assume that we were gonna spend a significant chunk of that on the architectural renderings. Um, you know, to try to bring it in. You know, preliminary design to bring back to the, the people. Um, and, and see whether, what community support is there.
Kurt, I think you were starting to say something, I didn't catch what.
No, I was, I was just, I was gonna ask Diane, they're also talking about hiring an architect, right, to do these drawings and things like that.
Right, so the first step, we wanted to hire somebody, just do these conceptual drawings, not spend a lot of money, so we can get. Buy-in from the town before we, you know, we don't wanna go to full engineer drawings and spend tons of money and have it get voted down. Do you know what I mean? So we need to get some kind of concept drawings put together. So we have something to talk about and something to put out for, you know, referendum or vote or whatever, town meeting, whatever.
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks.
I, I, I know I've mentioned this before and I, and I, I still personally think. I mean, we, last, last meeting with the uh, school superintendent, we talked about maybe a uh, a one milli- one mill a year increase for capital. For capital spending, um, we, we've been kicking around a, a bond issue. Um, I, I've had, I've always thought that the town needs a bond issue and is ripe for a long-term bond issue right now. Um, to, to take care of all this cap equipment, including the, including the uh, the, the senior slash community center. Um. You know, the, the board of selectmen, since, since they've taken over. Uh, this board of finance, I, I feel since, since it's been taken over. Um, they really got the message out on how bad this town was left. And, and, and the board, the present board of selectmen and this, this board of finance has inherited. Uh, forty years of neglect. I, I've been here s- this sixty-seven years that, you know, that I am, and, and basically. Um. It's always break, I, I'll go back to Gene Gasper uh, administration. You know, they did what they had to do to keep the roads passable. Um, whether it be oiling and sanding and, and plowing and stuff like that, and. And they were driving the oldest trucks, and I mean, we had the oldest firing fire trucks in the old firehouse that was our beautiful senior center. It's still, I still think we should blow it up. Um, but, eh, you know, I really think that there's, there's enough transparency now. Between the board of selectmen, between the board of finance, and even the school board, um, and RAM. Um, that the townspeople know that, that, that we're in a, we're in a bind. And the only way out, I feel, is a long-term bond issue. Uh, we took a twenty-year note on the fire station back in nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine. We, we actually, the committee hired a banker from, at that time, I think it was Connecticut Bank and Trust. And she researched um, the best rates possible to get us, you know, uh, funding. On a twenty-year note, which was, I think, paid off. Probably, I think, three years ago, Eric, I'm not sure, the fire station bond, three, four years ago. Um, but, um, it, it really was, we had it figured out where it costs the uh, every taxpayer in town. Uh, two dollars and twenty-five cents a month in their taxes to fund this fire station next door for twenty years. Uh, that, that's how, that's how fine, how fine-tuned we did the uh, the, the note, and that was on one point. No, that was on two point five million, uh, that we had approved. Uh, so, uh, just, just my thoughts, um. I, I think the town's ready for a, for a long-term bond issue, and we can, we can periodically pick off all of these, especially the road projects. I mean, they're the worst. I mean, they're the worst, by far, they're the worst, and the seniors have been waiting forty-plus years for a decent facility to meet it.
I think the seniors are gonna have to get something.
Yes, they do, that I I think that they should be put on a priority list, Diane, as far as I'm concerned. Um, you know, first and foremost, and the roads come after them, as far as I'm concerned, but. That we'll leave that up to the townspeople, but I think the majority of the townspeople know. How bad us, you know, how bad this town was left to the present board of selectmen and this present board of finance. Um, and I'll 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 be quiet now, so.
Rob?
No worries, I just wanted to say with respect to bonding, I mean, I'm of two minds. Um, on the one hand, we're in a low interest rate environment, so if we're going to bond. This is perhaps the best time to do. Uh, we're in a very low interest rate environment, I don't know what exactly interest rate we could get. I could just think about. What mortgage rate I could get and compare it to, Kurt, you mentioned late eighties. I remember my brother regaling me with tales of what his mortgage was in the late eighties. His percentage, you know, multiples of what I'm paying now, right? Okay, so there's that. On the flip side. That creates a long-term payment obligation. Where we're paying money, not the principal, we're paying the interest, obviously, I mean, everybody knows this, when you take out a loan. You're gonna pay much more ultimately than. The amount of the loan, overtime. Um.
That depends on your terms, right, and just how aggressive we get with that.
Okay, fair point, but I'm just saying, like. You know, with the school bond that we just recently paid off, I think, Eric, are we done with the school bond?
No.
One more year?
We got one more year.
One more year, so close.
Do we have to budget for it next year too?
Ninety K, baby, ninety K a year, we're so close, right?
This is the, this is the last year.
Alright, awesome. But just as an example, I mean, you know, one of the things we've done so well in this town, I mean, though we have neglected many things. We've also been able to just straight up buy things and not pay interest costs. Um, if we bond things, if we get in that mode. You know, obviously, we're gonna pay interest costs or we're gonna increase our overall cost for any given project. And I I'm not against it, again, like I said, we're in a low interest rate environment, it's actually a pretty good time to buy. To 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 buy debt, to do, do a bond, to to get a loan. It's a good time to do that, overall, I mean, over the last thirty years or forty years or whatever, basically, the course of my adult lifetime. This is about the best time you could ever take a loan out, so I'm not against it. I'm just saying that what we do ultimately is we add to our. Kind of operating expenses or ongoing expenses, and we still have the fundamental problem. Where our taxation level is this. Our expenditure level is here, we've been plugging it now for two, three years. I wanna say, with fund balance. And we can't do it anymore. Still have that fundamental problem, but I.
I think you're right to point out that any, any, any taking out of debt is not just kicking the can down the road a little bit, which I'm not. It in favor of when and if not necessary, it does have a real cost to it as well.
Yeah, that's just, that's all I'm trying to say, I don't wanna belabor it, I'm done.
I think we just have to make sure that we're not bonding. Money that should be funded with tax taxes, you know, the regular maintenance of the roads has gotta be built into the budget every year.
Operating budget versus.
Project oriented, you know.
Right. Right, we we have that distinction between capital and.
Right.
Operate.
Right, and and I wanna be very clear, I would not be in favor of bonding things, you know, if you're taking out a twenty-year bond. You don't bond for anything that doesn't last at least thirty to fifty years, you know, you bond for buildings. And you bond for bridges and culverts, cause those are items with, you know. Sixty to a hundred plus year lifespans, and that's a reasonable thing to do. You know, you don't bond for, you know, roadwork, because by the time you're still paying off the bond, then you need to go back and work on the road again.
Right, you're you're right, Eric, the firehouse was a a a plan for a fifty-year building. You know, we've already been there well over twenty, we're only, we're pushing thirty years already, next door, so, you know.
You're right, if if you look at the facilities the town owns. Um, the town, to my knowledge, has not yet ever given up a building that it's owned. I mean, public works, you know, is more than a hundred and fifty years old, that structure dates back to eighteen fifty or a good portion of it. Um, we're still using the old town hall, which was eighteen something, um, you know. Yeah, the old firehouse, you know, we acquired, used for like, you know. Fifteen hundred dollars, um, you know, back in, I wanna say nineteen twenty-seven. And then the fire department membership rebuilt the building and expanded it about threefold.
It was back at General Store.
Um, so, I mean, you know, the one thing I wanna say is that as we get into building buildings and anything we build. The senior center, you know, we live with the repercussions of our decisions, you know, for the next hundred years. And we need to think about that very carefully when we build it, because our grandkids, grandkids, you know, are gonna be using that building. Um, you know, so we gotta spend the money to do it right, because we don't, we don't really turn stuff over. You know, the school's the same way, the school, the oldest parts of that school date back to nineteen forty-seven, I think, something like that. And it's still in use.
Some good discussion, it's not, this is really gonna have a huge impact on this year's budget, but I do think it's worth. Bringing these up, talking about it, my my personal belief is that you 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 may well need to do the bonding to get anything done in terms of something like the senior center. But I'm also with Diane, and I think that there needs to be a recognition that, you know, we can't just kick the can down the road entirely. So there needs to be a mix of funding from current taxation, revenue sources and. You know, fund, the fund balances effectively, and then uh and then potentially bonding in order to get that done. So. Just uh, just kind of my point of view right now, looking at it from this 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 side.
Can I ask a question about the health director?
Go ahead, Louise.
Just wondering what what the health director actually does in town?
Uh, so the health director, i- and it's kind of a misnomer, but that's what we pay. The Eastern Highlands Health District, um, globally for their services. So that's everything dealing with COVID, that's dealing with school safety. Um, that's dealing with the health department, does the inspections on septic systems. Does site plan review for any developments. Um, you know, monitors everything from restaurants to liquor stores to uh hair salons. Um, so they have a pretty wide-ranging responsibility. Um, at one time, we had kind of done all that internally, we had a sanitarium. And then we just farmed out, uh, we had a physician. Uh, that worked a couple hours a year for the town and we farmed out some of the other responsibilities. But overall, we've gotten a lot more professionalism, um, out of being part of a health district.
And isn't this, if I remember correctly, isn't this a mandated uh roles that we need to be filled by the town?
Yes, a a lot of the the items are town requirements. Like, for instance, if we had any hair salons, we would be required to do semi-annual inspections of hair salons, well. You know, um, that kind of stuff does not scale down to a town our size. So a municipality like Willimantic can get away with its own internal health district. And a larger town does, but but most of Connecticut are, you know, utilizes regional health districts.
So we couldn't really regionalize that particular position, it it has to be town-related?
Uh, well, we are regionalizing it, um, we just basically write a check to the health district three or four times a year. Um, to get all those services rolled in.
Alright.
And we do have oversight on that, I am actually on the board of directors for the Eastern Highlands Health District. Uh, as Andover's administrator, so I sit in on everything from their planning sessions to their budget sessions.
Didn't we, Eric, used to have a uh a regular medical doctor as our health director? Appointed each year by these, a board of selectmen.
Yes, we did have our own standalone, but it's, it's more than that, cause your physician's not going out inspecting septic systems. And he's not going out and looking at hair salons, so you actually need about like. Probably five or six different individuals to take on different roles within that. Um, and what the health district does is basically, they've got one physician that covers the whole health district. Um, you know, and then they have, you know, all the sanitarians and, you know, then they have, uh. You know, they have all the the subsets, but it's not like they have one assigned to each town. You know, one person can, you know, covers multiple things. You know, and honestly, the the health department, Eastern Highlands Health Department is about fifty-fifty. Uh, funded by the towns and about fifty-fifty funded through state and federal grants. Um, so, so overall, given the level of service that we get in the the state requirements, I think that's a reasonable expense. Mark, you're muted.
Any other general, general questions or specific questions for Eric? Ideas or thoughts, I don't, I don't, just wanna keep it rolling. I I think it's been said, but you know, it seems to me like, other than reducing services. There's not a lot of extra in here, um, other than the funds. You know, we could opt out of, you know, funding some of these long-term capital projects or other projects, but. We all know that's come to bite us already, so, um, you know, and I I I think some of the. Sentiments of the residents of Andover have been made pretty clear over the last few years that I've been involved, um, so that's. That's something we, I don't think we would take, take on lightly.
I guess my thought, Mark, is, do we wanna set a target that we wanna hit for the bud? For in terms of a tax increase, and then we can work towards it. You know, we're, we're at seven point six percent right now, right?
It, let me, let me, I think the seven point six is the mil rate, um, change, I think, Eric, I'm not sure it actually was that spelled out in your thing, but I think. The mil rate increase that you were talking about, given the current proposed budgets from RAM AES in the town. After the uh grand list increase was, is like, right about seven point zero percent, does that sound about right?
Uh, seven point five eight percent.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's just where I'm. You know, in terms of making this, getting us to a point where we can bring a budget to town. You know, I'm thinking about, where do we wanna end up? What do we think is a reasonable? Increase that we can bring to the town, I mean, I I think everybody understands here that we're not going to the town with a flat budget. That's obviously not happening, so what is the level we think we can try to hit? And then how do we get there? That's all, I'm I'm just trying to think about it practically. Um, you know, in the past, we've had these small increases, these these one percent. Two percent kind of things or or flat budgets, and now we're looking at seven and a half or whatever, um, seven point six. So, how do we get to a budget level that we can live with? That we think is responsible, that takes care of the town, and at the same time is passable, what's the number we need to hit? And then we can kind of go from there. Um. I know it's arbitrary.
I was playing around with some numbers today, and so, so if we kinda. And I was looking at last year, it was one point seven six percent increase in the mil rate. So if we doubled that and tried to cap it at four percent, that still brings our mil rate up to like thirty-seven point oh three. Do you know what I mean, somewhere around there, it's still gonna be a significant increase in the mil rate, do you know what I mean? And I think, if I look at that, to get to four percent, whatever, we're talking three hundred thousand dollars at least, trying to find that kind of money.
Right, so there's an example, eh, right, exactly, so, you know, I think to myself. My gut, my gut, and my gut can lie, my gut is, we have to get under five.
Under five percent increase, I mean. And I was kind of thinking, okay, if we doubled what we did last year, we'd be up four, we can't be more than five, I agree with you, I don't think.
But let's, let's also keep in mind what last year was not, you know, last year was 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 not an ordinary year.
No, no.
Absolutely would have increased taxes more last year, I think we would have recommended a significant mil rate increase. Had the situation been different, you know, we took into account the fact that the the pandemic was in full swing, or not even in full swing. But we was, it was a risk that.
We saw it coming, yeah.
By coming, we planned for it appropriately, and we had to make the decision as a board of finance. You know, uh, I certainly was much more uh restrained in terms of the the spending I would have been comfortable with. I would have been much more comfortable putting in a higher amount out front of the town. Uh, but we felt like we couldn't do that, and we all, I think, at the time, anticipated that. We would be playing a little catch-up this year. Yeah, I'm not, I've, I I would have expected us to hit four percent, just as, you know, four, four and a half percent, as a matter of course, last year. To make up for the deficiencies that we have seen and and talked about for the last, you know, twenty years. Whether the residents would have accepted that or not, would would have had to be determined by the vote. My personal feeling is that we're we're even further back, um, you know, now, because of what we had to do last year, and it was the right thing to do. You know, it was the right thing to do, I think we as a board of finance, we're we're not, you know, we're not in a position to to make that decision when, when the. townspeople didn't get a chance to vote, uh, due to the pandemic, so.
Oh, I agree.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna take last year too much as of of a baseline. Um, but I do unders- I do believe that, you know, we have to take into account that there have to be some limits on. What people are gonna be willing to stomach.
Yeah.
I don't know this, cause I was interested in trying to look at trends and. You know, so in twenty twenty-one, we did one point seven six, I don't know the numbers for eighteen and nineteen and nineteen and twenty. If, you know, go back another, through last three years, what has been our percentage increase, it would be a good baseline to have to show. Okay, before COVID, we did these months, COVID hit this year. As far as, even as a selling point.
My recollection, I'd have to. Recollection is that we had almost no tax increases until recently. Um, Linda, you can, you're the other longstanding member, uh, you can chime in. But uh, my recollection is that for a long time, and and to our detriment, I think, we kept it really flat.
We did, everybody's goal seemed to be, we we can't raise the mil rate. Maybe by point five, and I'm I'm the cheapest person I know, and even a couple of meetings, I'd say, you know, we can't keep doing this, you know, it's like. Your home, you can't just stop fixing the furnace, it's, you know, then you're gonna wind up with a bigger bill. It's. It's been going on a long time.
That's correct. We acclimated the town to this, up until recently, to this idea that every budget cycle, we. We have a zero to one percent increase kind of thing, um, and if we come out of the box with seven and a half. It's this dramatic departure, I I completely agree that we have a backlog, we have to deal with it. Uh, I and I'm personally not allergic to spending, uh, when it's called for. I'm totally for it, uh, I'm just saying, in terms of getting a budget passed, we have. we have to think about it. And honestly, I, I believe that seven point six percent is flatly unpassable. That's just my take. So we have to somehow get from that to what we think is, is a reasonable budget that we can take to the town. That's all. Uh, I don't think this is, I'm not saying, I'm saying, saying anything crazy here. We have to find a way towards something that we think we can bring to the town that will pass at town meeting. I assume we're having town meeting this time. Um, last year was unusual. We, as Mark said, we did something that we are not accustomed to doing. And we were very reluctant to raise taxes because we were doing something unilaterally as a board, which is not what we're supposed to do. It was, we were in a weird situation. This year seems more normal. And so if we go through the normal process, then the question is, okay, how do we get a town meeting to approve a budget, send it to referendum and pass that budget? That's all.
Still to go from seven, what, seven and a half? Is that we're at down to five? That's still a lot, a big chunk.
That's still a big cut.
Get, to get, to get to that number is a big chunk of money. There's not a whole lot of money around.
Correct. And, and this is my, this is kind of my point, like even if we want to target five percent, which is the, the biggest tax increase by far since I've been in this town, since oh seven that I moved in. I don't think five percent has been even approached since I've been here in a given annual budget. I will go to bat for a budget that we think is the right answer and we think has to be done. But I want to be sure that we've done everything we can do before we do that. And then if we are, if that's the case, I will sit up in town meeting, I will defend it with everything I've got. That's all I'm saying.
It's, it's one thing for us to sit here and we've been on the board for ages to sit here and know that the infrastructure is going, we have to work on it. We have, we have to take care of things. And it's another thing to go to the town and say, we want to increase the mill rate by whatever. Even if people intellectually know it, I don't think they're going to want to do it.
Which is why we have to make the case. That's why we, we have to come to a point where as a board, I, I feel honestly, uh, I feel that we have to get to a point where as a board, we agree broadly, whether it's seven oh or six to one or whatever. We have to get to the point where we really buy into our own budget and we can try to sell it. Because I think it's clear at this point, no matter what we do, we're bringing a significant tax increase to this town. Right? No matter what we do. No matter how many cuts we try to make in the town budget or the capital budget, we're still going in with a significant taxing. And we're going to have to sell that. We're going to have to convince people that it's the right call.
So one of the board of selectmen meetings, they had been talking about the concept of a dedicated one mil, ten-year finite increase just to fund this infrastructure stuff we have to do and selling a concept like that to the town, that it's a temporary. You know, I don't know.
That's probably not a tough sell. The problem is we've got this large increase coming out of RAM and AES. I mean, let, we're not, that's not on the agenda tonight and we're not going to talk about it at length, but I think that's just going to, you know, that's, that's where the increase is coming from, you know, it is.
Well, RAM is a decrease this year. So we're down on RAM from last year.
Well, I think we're down because we're down as a percentage.
Right.
I know that RAM isn't down overall, right?
Right. No, no. I just got a note from my husband. We have a, we have a four thousand decrease from A H M.
Four thousand dollars. We're good. We're good, everybody.
Our department budget is flat from last year, so.
Hey Kurt, I'm not looking at you, man.
Zero increase.
I know it. Um.
The work is going to be in the education budget.
And I apologize, Mark, for going, I know I'm off topic when I talk about the bigger picture because we're trying to focus tonight on the town budget. I just apologize.
This is part of the bigger picture, right? I mean, I, I think that it's, uh, it's, we don't want to go too far off topic. I, I do agree with that. We, we, our main goal here is to review the town budget. But what we're facing on the other side of the town budget, in addition, that it's going to make up the total, total, total expenditures for the town is, it, it affects our town budget. It just does, you know? So we all know that there's going to be limited appetite for the, for the tax increase and, uh, nobody wants to pay any more than they have to. And we're just going to have to come up with something that makes sense, uh, that the town will accept.
And I, I don't know how to do that with the town budget. The only, and I think Eric alluded to this or not even alluded, just flat out said it, is that the places that we could realistically really cut are capital. And then we're kicking the camp. And this is what kills me about it is because, yeah, that's where we could cancel out some real money. And at the same time, we're killing ourselves because next year, the year after that, the year after that, those capital expenditures are still going to sit there. Those needs are still going to be there. Uh, and it's just, it's tough. Uh, we don't have a lot in the operating budget we can cut. Anybody who's been through the town budget, I, I mean, I've done this year after year. We've gone through it line by line. There's not a lot there. And Eric's been pretty on top of stuff. So I, I mean, I don't think things have changed dramatically where we're going to suddenly go through our town budget and find hundreds of thousands of dollars that we can cut. No, you're going to cut five thousand bucks. That's what you're going to do. So what do we do? I mean,
We need to find three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. And, you know, I've been, I've been through this process. The last time we really, really hacked and slashed at the, at the town budget was when before half of you were on this board. And, you know, Adrian Mandeville was on the board. I was on the board. Jeff Murray was on the board. We went through and we, we cut a whole bunch of stuff that we thought we could cut, some of which we were right about, some of which we were wrong about.
Yeah, I loved the sum of your.
You lived with a lot of that. He's exactly right, right? You can speak to this better than anybody. Um, we did our best. We, we, we're trying to do the right thing, Eric, but we.
Absolutely.
You know, at the end of the day, what did we say? You know, maybe I, I, I'm trying to remember now what we cut out of the budget, but it might've been fifty, a hundred K, something like that. Um, after hours and hours of, of going through every single line item, two hundred dollars here, three hundred dollars there and so on. And the real money is in the capital and the education budgets. There's no slack in the town budget, especially when you just accept that town employees have to be paid. They're going to be salary and benefit increases and whatnot. So I'm just sitting here going, how do we square this circle? Where we know flat out, our town budget is more or less what it needs to be. Could we cut it a little bit? Yes, a little bit. But at the end of the day, how do we get from a seven and a half percent increase to even a five percent? How do we do that? Well, the only way we do that is we talk about the ed budget, which we're not here to do.
What does everybody think about, because no one was able to vote on the budget last year and there was some feedback about that last year? Do you think people will be more engaged this year and more paying attention? Because they didn't get their opportunity to vote last year?
I, I would say people are going to be more engaged and paying attention because we have a high tax increase on the table. You know, whether they're going to be more, you know, if, if we had done something egregious last year, I'm sure we would have heard more about it and people would have been attending these meetings in, in force. Um, so I'm guessing that probably won't have any, any significant impact. But I, I do think the fact that, that we're looking at a significant tax increase is, is going to get some attention and it should, it absolutely should.
Correct. That's exactly how it works. Um, things run smoothly until you change something and then people show up. That's how it works. And how it should work. Fair, fair enough.
So the other thing that, the other piece of the puzzle is revenue. Um, so you know, in terms of cuts, the only thing you could really do that would make a significant impact would be, um, other than capital would be to cut out an actual service. There's really only two you can flat out cut out. And both would have enormous repercussions. The first is the library. You could get rid of the library entirely. You could combine it with another town. You would get killed. Um, they would kill me first, then they would kill all. Um, the, the second is the resident state trooper. And there has not been any support for that. I mean, both of those are fairly big ticket items. But both of those, in a sense, are the cost of doing business. Um,
We are killed.
There, other than that, we're, we're obligated to run a residential transfer station in some form or another. So you can't get rid of that. You could increase fees. Um, for the record, the transfer station we bring in and revenue from stickers, about twenty percent of the total operating cost of that department. So there's certainly room to increase fees.
Which are another form of taxation.
Which is another form of taxation, right?
Exactly.
A essentially a user fee. Um, you know.
Not against that, by the way, to pay for the service to have some kind of balance in the budget, but
To be honest.
Pointing out as long as it's, it's, you know, it's not regressive or something, but go ahead.
Right. And, and we've, we've, you know, essentially increased the fees for the building department pretty dramatically, um, as of March first. Um, you know, because we had lagged behind in what we were charging residents. So now we're, you know, we're doing that with the intention of basically recouping the cost of that department. Um, you know, and we've looked at doing that with the other land use boards, planning and zoning and inland wetlands. Inland wetlands fees have gone up pretty dramatically. Uh, planning and zoning's fees have not gone up that much, but the, it's, in a lot of cases, it's, you're never going to make the planning and zoning commission completely cost neutral. Um, so I mean, from a revenue perspective, you know, most of the fees we collect from the town clerks, those are set by state statute. So there's not really anything we can do about it. So there aren't a lot of other revenue streams the town has. So I just wanted to point out that we're not getting out of it. Um, by, you know, we could make, you know, we could double the transfer station fees and bring in an additional thirty thousand dollars. Um, you would have some really unhappy people, but you could do that. Um, maybe you could charge people to go to the library a little bit, um, and offset some fees, but you know, I, I think the people who tend to use the library tend to be people who are fairly limited means anyway. So that would be fairly regressive. Um, you don't have a lot of other options to increase taxation. So if you want to make up the difference, you're doing it with, uh, budget cuts. Um, you know, and, and again, the only areas where we can really look at big budget cuts. You know, and a, as far as departments, you know, one of the things I've done is I pulled all the CCM Connecticut Conference of Municipalities data on, you know, department by department and position by position from, you know, finance through the assessor's office, through the tax collector's office. You know, and then kind of normalized the costs based on the size of the town we have. Um, and we're, you know, we're still running a relatively, I mean, it's always, if you search hard enough, it's always easier. It's always possible to find a town that has a position that they pay less than us. But you got to work at it a little bit. Um, you know, we're, we're running departments pretty efficiently, um, in terms of our cost basis. Um, so you know, in, in the bottom line from my perspective is, you know, our per capita cost for, you know, for the, for the everything non-education is about a thousand seventy-five, which, you know, and that includes all the capital expenses, you know, and that's really in line with, um, you know, what other towns are. So I guess what I'm saying is that the town's portion of the budget is certainly in line with other municipalities. And considering that's heavily weighted to, towards coming up with capital spending to repair, uh, you know, previous sins, I think that's a very responsible number. Um, that's kind of my take on it.
Mark, Mark, can I move, uh, half of my time to, uh, Dave Hewitt? Yeah, I think he'd like to say so.
We're, we're not, nobody's limited. Go for it, Dave.
No, there's an elephant in the room. No one's really mentioned it. Um, the trooper is the only line item. You can go on and on and cut, you know, really hurt some of these other departments. And unfortunately, that's the only one you could make that money up to get a decent amount. Um, I'm not saying that's, it's something I think we need to consider if we want to put that, the town, let them decide. I know they didn't like it last time, but basically it's coming down to a large increase. Uh, this is the only area we could possibly cut without, um, RAM looking at it. So I, I don't think we should just discount it. It's going to be ugly. It's going to be tough. Um, but it's, it's something you present to the town and say, look, you got a seven percent budget. This is the only place you can cut if we word it that way. Um, let, let them decide. And that's what happened last time. I didn't take it personal. It wasn't personal to the trooper. It's a line item to get the budget down. Um, yep. You know, I, I mean, that's the reality. We can sit here and go back and forth and really, you know, Eric will agree. You know, we cut some of these other departments. They're really going to be struggling to operate. And at the end of the day, what, what we're talking, maybe a tenth of a percent, maybe?
Right. By the way, um, Eric, I, I don't know what the, the number is off the top of my head, but even the trooper, which is the single largest line item, single light item that we just X out. It, if memory serves was, you know, less than one percent. It's like half.
A hundred, it's not even going to get us.
Hundred and seventy-five thousand. So it's not a mill. It's a big, it is a big line item. There's no question.
It, it's our single largest, if memory serves, line item in the town budget. Uh, you know, not departmental, but just individual.
I think that's correct. Yeah.
Yep.
And that's why we looked at it, that, you know, when I was on the board and we tried to cut it and Linda remembers. Um, and it went horribly, but we tried. And the reason we tried was that, that exact reason, it was the easiest s- single cut that you could make. And the, the fact is that it was something like point seven of a mil or something like that at the time.
Yep.
Is that about right, Eric? So, yeah, I'm for it. I'll, I'll go to bat for it again. Sure. I'll, I'll tilt at that windmill again. No doubt. Um, that gets us to six point eight?
I don't think we can just put that out there without looking at the AES budget. The AES.
That's, that's, that's my point. Is that, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to hack and slash at that budget anymore than anybody else does. Uh, especially given I have two kids and that's. Um, but I've also told my, Kurt, hang on one second, Kurt.
I'm good.
I've also told my friends on, that I know that are on the Andover Board of Ed, they're on the DTC with me. I've already, I already told them. I'm like, look, I, I love you guys. I get it. Uh, I think AES has done a phenomenal job with COVID. They really have. Uh, at the same time, the budget you presented us is flatly unpassable. Uh, at the same time, the budget you presented us is flatly unpassable, I flat out told them that.
Too much.
It's, it's just not passable, so, and they know it. So they're expecting a counter offer, so the question is, what's our counter?
I don't know that it's a counter offer, it's just a decision what to present to the town, so. Um, but I take, I, I take it in the spirit of what you intend.
You know what I mean, Mark, I mean.
We have to make our decision and, and leave it up to the, to the taxpayers, I mean, that's our job, but, yeah, I think, I think. Y- y- you guys, eh, eh, not surprised, but I think we've, we've kind of come to. Some consensus and that the town, department by department budget is fairly reasonable, there's not a lot of opportunity there. The opportunities are in the funds, which again kicks the can further down the road, actually gets us in the hole because. You know what, each generation happens, right, you know, you know, it's, uh.
Every year we push it off, it gets worse.
That's right, chaos happens, you know, entropy happens, things, things are just gonna get worse, so we can't. You know, it would be irresponsible, I think, to go too deep there, uh, but that is an option, uh, that doesn't have an immediate impact on service. Um, and then there's the AES budget and, and the, the resident state trooper, you know, to me, those are the, the.
Yeah, see all the things.
I mean, that's it, that's what we got, well, oh.
Uh, i- if I, if I can, and I know, I, this is the big picture that we're talking about. Um, and I'm gonna mention AES, I haven't got my nose out of the, uh, their budget since, uh, Superintendent Bruno's, uh. Uh, uh, report to us, uh, the what, last week, um, she answered a lot of questions that I had. Uh, in regards to the budget, but one thing I cannot get my hands around. Is twenty-two thousand plus dollars per head, per student, even counting the, uh, the preschools. Um, I just, uh, th- there's gotta be somewhere to knock that down. To a reasonable level, at, in line with Marlboro and Hebron. Uh, per head, I mean, they run, they operate schools too, just like we do. Yeah, we have to operate the facility, they have to operate their facilities, and they still keep their costs a lot lower. So I, I can't, and, and anywhere have I seen so far of, of, of. Why it costs twenty-two thousand plus dollar per student to run that school, I just. I think that's something that we really need to take a close look at, and that's it.
Yeah, Kurt, um, did you look at Bolton too, or are they similar?
No, I, I'm, I'm just talking about the, the, the region, we're still in, you know, our high schoolers are.
That's why I mentioned Bolton is, is that they're the one, I know they're not in our regional district. But they're in our region.
What are they?
They have their own incomplete school district.
I understand that, what are they, what, what's their cost per pupil?
I know, I don't know off the top of my head, that's why I'm asking. I don't know if you looked at it, okay, I, I'd have to look at it too, I'd have to research it.
What is it, excuse me?
I think it's eighteen thousand, Kurt, I mean, it's, it's pretty simple math, it's the number of t- the students, I mean, our ratio. Is very low compared to other towns, I mean, extremely low. And that's what's driving the numbers, it's, it's not hard to figure that one out.
We've got about a one, a hundred and fifty students.
Well, a hundred and eighty-three counting, counting. Three classes of preschoolers.
And we got fourteen teachers, there's a problem.
I mean, yeah, and, uh, far be it for me, I, you know, this is a. I tend to get a little hesitant to go too hard one way or the other on this, because I do have vested interest. Cause I have my kids in that school right now, like, you're a second grader and a fifth grader. Um, one of my daughter's classes was almost split, but then not split. Uh, due to parental intervention, I guess you could say, so I, I. I try not to go too hard on this, but I will say that. For whatever our system's faults may be, they've done a tremendous job over the last year. From the perspective of somebody who has kids in that school. That doesn't necessarily mean that their budget is all, is A-OK, no matter what they want.
Rob, both my kids went through Andover Elementary School. When the ratios were higher, they both turned out fine, it's a fantastic school. I, I think, uh, my son's serious comment, he said he had about twenty kids in his class when he went through, so, um. You know, they can do a good job, I just, that's where the number, that's where the driver is, that's the easy math.
Yeah, no, I understand, I mean, you know, when I have a kid with, I have a kid with a class size of twelve, I get it, Dave.
You know, you know, Rob, we, we all have a vested interest in that school, you know, uh, I, I went through that school from, uh, first grade to sixth. And I think I turned out okay, both of, both of my. Both of my sons went through that school, and, and again, we, you had a very large classes, you know, uh, all the way through. Uh, my, my grandson's there right now, he's finishing up his second year of preschool, and I know, um. But my son, uh, dropped off his, uh, his partial payment, uh, he's paying over six thousand dollars a year. Uh, for my, for his son to go there in the preschool program, so.
Yeah.
I'm trying to grasp the, uh, the tuition payments versus the, the, what the town's paying for, for my grandson. They're putting twenty-two thousand dollars on my grandson's head, my son picks up over six of it.
No, no, I hear you, and, look, I, 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 I put my kids in that preschool too.
You know, that's the only thing I can't grasp in her presentation to us, uh, class sizes, I think she explained it very well. And, you know, my son's going into kindergarten, he's gonna be one of those, uh, ten, ten, ten kids in each class. You know, but she, I think she explained that very well, so that answered one of my other big questions, but, uh. Still again, twenty-two plus thousand dollars per head in that school, and you're right, it's a great school, we have great teachers. And everything else, uh, but it, that's, that's a big nut, that's a big nut that we have to tackle.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot of money, no question.
Uh, I mean, I, I think long term, the, the bigger question is, you know, education is a big. It's obviously the driver of the budget, it has been in this town since, you know. Ad infinitum, basically, um.
Way, way back when I went there, Eric.
Well, and, you know, it's funny that, I, I have a, a, I'm, I'm getting it digitized. It's a budget presentation from nineteen fifty-five, which was basically done by hand, it's a. Two foot by three foot, and they did the graphs by gluing on like. Squares versus rectangles, I mean, it's really kind of cool, old school history. And if you look at the ratio of school spending in nineteen fifty, when our budget was like two point one million dollars. It's basically identical to what it is today, you know, the, the town got a quarter of the money, the school got three quarters of the money. Um, I, I think the, the bigger long-term question is, uh. There's no question that, that the RAM levy and, and costs for RAM are quite high. And costs for elementary education are quite high, I mean, obviously, that's why. Bolton looked at us last year and said, holy shit, look at what they're paying, you know. We could suck up their whole class, you know, and, you know, we'd be happy to do it for half that cost. I mean, of course, that doesn't account for special ed students and things like that, so it wasn't. You know, it's not a complete savings that it looks like on paper, but the big question is, what do we wanna do as a community, number one? And number two, is there some way, you know, there, there's lots of possibilities, um. You know, and, and I, I feel personally that. RAM is almost a bigger problem than AES. If you look at it right now, our RAM levy is five point two million dollars, we send, we're sending. You know, next year, two hundred and twenty-three students or two hundred and seventeen, depending on which number they use. You know, and that works out to twenty-three and a half thousand dollars per student, and that's just the levy, that's not their budget. Cause they still get all this other funding that comes directly to the school district, and when you add that in. You know, your, their actual expenses are somewhere around twenty-five thousand dollars a student.
Twenty-five, twenty-six thousand, yeah.
Yeah, which is really high, um, and the, the question in my mind is, is there a way forward? You know, is it worth, you know, contemplating the unthinkable, which is breaking the compact with RAM? Um, I mean, one of the options that, that you could float is simply taking the. The seventh and eighth grade and do like a lot of schools and run seventh and eighth grade in. With the elementary school, you certainly have capacity for it, um, you know, and then try to. Come up with some alternative for nine through twelve, I mean, you know, the, the question is, we're gonna be forced at some point to do something. Because we can't just keep, you know, cranking up, um, town taxes, cause. You know, we're gonna have a revolt going, um.
Yeah, wasn't that, wasn't that looked at, uh, uh, some time ago? Basically, uh, basically, uh, Hebron and Marlboro said they wouldn't let us go. Because of, because of what we were paying there, it would, it would cost us, it would cost us tremendously to get out of the compact.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure, i- it would be a loss, and it would take a year or two, and, and it would be ugly, don't, don't.
Ugly in dollars.
Try it, our, my son Ben graduated from RAM in ninety-six. And I think when he was starting seventh grade, so sometime around ninety, we were start, we, we were talking about going in with Bolton.
Right, exactly.
We had huge meetings and what their curriculum was. They, they wanted more kids, and it was just too expensive to get out of the RAM.
Correct.
But that was, so that was about nineteen ninety.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, they have, Ran- uh, Bolton has elementary through high, all by their own seeds, and they pay taxes commensurate with that.
Well, they also, they also bring kids in from other towns, uh, Rob. Columbia, Covent, uh, not Coventry, but, uh, Columbia kids had a choice to go in there, other kids. Uh, and Bolton kids had its choice to go, to go to Manchester, so.
Sure, but I mean, in the past, whenever I've compared our towns, Bolton's tax rate, their, their mill rate. Has always been higher, and in part, that's due to the fact they have their own complete school system, what they're paying for. Uh, we could potentially merge, I mean, I don't wanna do this, but. You know, as a parent, I don't really wanna do it, but, you know, it's gotta be on the table.
Yeah, I, I think we have to be a little careful here, guys, because the agenda really doesn't cover the educational budget.
You're right.
Uh, you know, this is, it's not, um, you know, I, I think in context of the overall expenditures and the budget, it's okay to talk about. You know, the overall picture, we got way too specific, I think probably, on the AES stuff, and that is gonna, just needs to be tabled largely and probably. Gone over again at another meeting.
Okay.
Just, it, uh, you know, it's, we're, we're getting into sketchy territory, and we're talking about that when it's not on the budget. It is part of the overall picture, we have to understand that, but I think we have to probably move on. Yeah, I thi- I think, I think the RAM budget and the overall picture and the contribution to the overall budget, that's okay in the context of the town's budget. And, and what we're gonna have to do, and, and how do we get a budget to pass, but I, I think we have to probably think about going out. Okay, that being said. You know, I mean.
Is it the board's intention to take it to a vote? To see whether people wanna retain the resident state trooper, is that the, is that what I'm sensing?
I, I don't know, are we there yet, for that?
I am not adverse to that question, because I know we just did this two years ago. Um, two years ago, three, it'll be three years coming.
Three years ago.
Yeah, so, um. But, but the reality is that that is, you know, the biggest. Expenditure that probably, honestly, in my opinion, dollar for dollar, is gonna have the least impact on services for the average taxpayer. However, it's also something people feel strongly about, and they totally get it.
Yeah.
So, um, that, that, that is. Yeah, I, I don't necessarily am advocating for it one way or the other, and I think the town spoke pretty loudly three years ago. Um, but, you know, we're, we're in a situation now, it's a little different than, so.
Uh, I would just say that, uh, during that discussion three years ago, uh, we brought. Many facts and, uh, whatnot to the table, and it had zero impact whatsoever. And we got, I believe it was something like seventy, thirty, we got killed, so. I am not against this, because I actually believe you're right. That this is something that the town could cut without it being. A serious, uh, detriment to our services, but the town's people clearly don't think that. At least didn't think that three years ago, and when we tried to present them with data that said otherwise. It had zero effect whatsoever, I will tilt at this windmill again with you, but I'm telling you, it's almost assuredly a loser.
Yeah, I think it's fair enough, I mean, if you got a ten-point swing, it's still not gonna pass, right, so.
I, I actually think it's the right call, but I've been there before, been through it.
Right.
Telling you, we lost.
I, I, I would say, don't, I mean, ultimately, I get it, that it's a big nut. To crack, because it's, you know, it, it's a large expense. But what I would say is interacting with the resident state trooper, there's an awful lot of intangibles you get. You know, from having somebody, you know, kind of at your beck and call that can work on town priorities. That you don't get if you're just simply interacting with the barracks and. Um, I would also say that what we've gotten, you know, if you think about it, the, uh. Um, the last time there was a murder in the town of Andover, that got resolved by the resident state trooper. Because he dug at it for like a year and a half, until he finally got enough information to prosecute. And our current, uh, are just, the resident state trooper we just lost, Daryl. Um, you know, we had a rash of burglaries on our commercial enterprises in town. You know, that was really problematic, um, but you know what, they've apprehended, you know. Pretty much, the, the guy who kept robbing the mini mart, the multiple people, they've caught them all. The guys who robbed the store, um, here, they caught them. The guys who vandalized the mural, they tracked them down and caught them. So, wh- what I would say is they've actually been very successful. About working out the town's priorities, um, in the issues that are having in town. Do we have enough presence that we're gonna stop the crimes in action? Probably not. Because with one guy covering a town, you know, the chances that he's on the shift. You know, when a burglary takes place are pretty small, and he would have to be, you know, right there. But the ability to, to have one guy dedicate his time to investigation is, is really kind of nice. Um, I think, but, you know, but it's expensive, and, you know, and it's just a question, is it worth the cost?
I think, uh, you know, our job is to look at the budget financially, not get emotional about it. If there's a way we could put it to the town, cause ultimately, honestly, I think it's a waste of our time getting the facts like we did last time. And personally, I think it'll probably fail, I think it's just an option we can offer to the town and say, look, we got a huge tax increase. This is the only thing we can cut, what do you wanna do? That's kind of the way I would suggest to be framed.
I agree with that, especially with all the, uh, burglaries and all the things that have been going on lately. I think a lot of town, townspeople are gonna say, um, what's gonna happen to the town, it's gonna get worse. And I don't think a lot of people know the facts that you just said, Eric, that all these people were caught. I think they, they may still think that people are still lurking out there. I think it's a good, I think it's a good indicator, you know, that, to get rid of some of that money, but. The town's gonna, I think people in town are gonna be fearful, that's my opinion on it.
Uh, I'll just echo Dave, and, and I think he's right on this, is that presented as a choice. And, you know, last time we did this, the clear choice. And multiple people stood up in town meeting and said it, I will pay more in taxes. I will pay more in taxes to keep the trooper. Uh, and if that's their call, if that's what the public wants, so be it. Right? So, we presented like this, like, look, we can do a budget with or without the trooper. If we cut the trooper, it saves us this much money, you know, it, it's straightforward. Um. That said, guys, I mean, we're talking about like half a percent. Something like that out of the bu- uh, out of it. Uh, and we're looking at, you know, a seven and a half percent increase. You know, this is not something that's gonna get us. In and of itself where we want to go. It helps and we should consider it, it should be on the table, it should prob- probably be put before the town. But in and of itself, it doesn't get us there, it's just the one thing that we can do in the town budget that'll have a significant impact.
Uh, just, just, uh, there's a comment also, I, I talked to, uh, uh, acting trooper Farrar today. He's uh filling in for Daryl at this time, and he had informed me besides himself, there's four other. Troopers who have put in for this job, uh, apparently Daryl had made this Andover job fairly attractive. Uh, through, to other troopers, so they have actually five applications right now. That the lieutenant has to pour through to, uh, to fill the position here, so. Um, that was as of, uh, this morning.
Yeah, these are small town resident state troopers are highly sought after gigs, there's no question. Um, which is, the, the good news is that they tend to assign, you know, very good officers on the whole. So, I mean, we've had a history for a while of having really good resident state troopers. Other than the one that, you know, got a little out of control.
Well, you know, I'm gonna. Suggest that we, we probably. Talk these things through pretty, pretty carefully on the town level, uh, and I, I'm more than happy to discuss any more details or any, any. More thoughts that people have. You know, my thinking is we let this gel, we go back, we look at the numbers, we think about how the best way to approach it might be. We're gonna have to obviously pull this together in an integrated budget with recommendations, uh, for the town, for AES. And, and totality with RAM. Um, and then decide how to present it, um. Does anybody else have anything on the town budget that you wanna, you wanna dig into?
I guess I have one question, Eric, do you have something? That could be quickly put together, because I know you did a lot of work about what needs to be done on the roads and. And for next year, so when I'm looking at all these fund transfers and the money we're putting in there. What do we actually need for next year? Do you know what I mean? I mean, I don't have a good handle on. This is the bare minimums we need to. Maintain the status quo, do you know what I mean?
Um, you mean in terms of just roadwork specifics?
Cause that's where, that's the biggest money, I mean, okay, bridges and culverts, I guess that's gotta be outside of it because. Those are events that are gonna hap- that are gonna happen, I mean, sooner or later, they're gonna fail and that's it. The decision's made, you know.
Right, and, and the reality is, you got to get to it before you have to close the road, so that's your kind of drop dead date.
Um, so, I guess for me, I'm a little fuzzy on. Coming into the next budget year, what has to be accomplished?
So, the, the, if you think about it this way. The break even point for roadwork is about three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year in this town. In other words, any year we put less than three forty total into roadwork. On average, our roads are getting worse. Any year we can put more than three forty in, on average, our roads are getting better. Um, if you wanted to say what is our total, uh. You know, our total backlog of roadwork. I mean, it's somewhere between four and four point eight million dollars, depending on what assumptions you use about cost. Per repair. Um, you know, we're, I'm working with the Public Works Foreman right now on. You know, kind of an approach. To stabilize our road network, really is how I would, I would put it. Um, going very heavily on, you know, kind of chip seal in the minimalist approach to a road. To keep it serviceable, um, I mean, accepting that. You know, what, what I had hoped to do is be able to keep the main trunk roads, the thru roads. At a higher standard and then just chip seal all the secondary and the back roads. Um, but looking at it objectively, we can't afford to do that. So, at the end of the day, we're gonna basically, we're gonna leave everything with a serviceable chip seal surface. Um, and try to get to everything, we did about seven miles of roads. This year, all total between fog seal and chip seal and something called cape seal. Um, we're probably not gonna do any cape seal in this upcoming year because cape seal is just too expensive per mile. Um, and given our budgets, we just can't afford it. Um, I would have liked to do it in the Lake District, because in the area that's heavily walked. And bicycled, it's a better surface underfoot. Um, you know, chip seal leaves a lot to be desired in terms of a surface, but. You know, it's cheap and, you know, and that's why rural towns do it. Um. I totally lost my train of thought, so i- and I think we don't have any other roads. Everything that needed to be fog sealed, you know, which is basically a technique when you have good pavement to start with. To seal it, you know, and keep the oxidation from becoming a problem. So, we've done everything that was an appropriate road for it last year, so we don't really need to do any of that this year. So, we're basically gonna be crack sealing roads, we're gonna be shimming, which is putting asphalt. In the areas of the depressions in the road, like if you have significant wheel ruts, essentially filling them in. So, you get the crown of the road right and then chip seal. And basically trying to do as much road as possible and pretty much only do that. And then concentrate on the drainage projects that we need to do. Because one of our biggest problems is that we've just really neglected the, the. Understructure the, of the roads and how we get the water away from the roads. So, we have a seven to ten year backlog, just of regular drainage like catch basins. Um, and things like that, um, you know, with the intention of taking two roads. Either later this fall or next spring and reclaiming them completely. And we're doing that on the more heavily traveled roads. Um, that have significant structural problems. And that is the first section of Shoddy Mill Road from Route Six up to where it intersects Whales Road. Maybe just a little bit farther, like a hundred and fifty yards past the intersection. And then also the very first section of Long Hill. Um, from the church basically up past where Wheeling Road intersects. And again, that was just because that was an old state road that was initially just oil and stone. And that at some point was, uh, so it just basically has a failed substructure. So, we really need to, that's one road that, you know, there's, there's no possibility of kind of patching that up. Over the long term, that one has to just, at least that first section, you gotta just grind it up and start over. So, that's really what we're anticipating doing. Um, there's around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, uh, to address about nine miles of road. That would be crack sealed and then shimmed and then chip seal. Um, the goal being in basically over the next four years. To chip seal, to shim and chip seal everything in town and at least get it serviceable and take care of the worst of the issues. And, and the thing about it is if you have a road that starts off bad and you chip seal it. Um, you don't get as much life out of the chip seal as you do if you start with a road that's still in reasonable shape. You know, you can chip seal once every seven years and keep that road perfectly functional. But when you get down to a, like something like Bazola, which is pretty shot. Um, when you chip seal it, you really only get yourself maybe three, maybe four years. Before it's back in the same condition. So, but the cost of reclaiming that road and doing it right is so high. At least at this point, I mean, we're, you know, so the basic approach is Band-Aid the really bad roads and keep them serviceable. And then take the good roads and do enough to them to keep them in a reasonable condition, if that makes sense.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Yeah, so we're not, you know, we're not trying, I hate to say this, but we're not trying to deliver really good roads. Um, you know, we're trying to keep the roads that are good. In reasonable condition and bring the really bad stuff up to acceptable condition. Is how I would put it.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Eric or comments from the board?
I have a question. Oh. And go ahead.
I was just gonna say, kind of go back to the trooper, but not really talk about him. Um, the next time we do have an election, if we wanted to put a question at the bottom of the vote. On how people feel about it, it might give us a better idea of what the true population thinks.
Well, I, I, the other thing I would kind of. The numbers of people that come out for a budget meeting and actually vote is pretty small. As opposed to the total population, if you were gonna do that, that would be like an unofficial question. At a, like a fall election.
Yeah, that may have been what Linda was talking about, when she said election, that's kind of what I think is non-binding.
Well, you know, this, this brings up the issue of when we have our elections, you know, uh, some of our elections are off kilter from. The main event, and so we have low turnout. Like, we'll have municipal election where we have thirty six percent turnout, and then we have presidential election with eighty percent turnout. And i- i- you know, it's factor two. So, yeah, if we're gonna do something and we're gonna ask the town, if we're trying to canvas the town. I would think we would want to get the. Highest number of, of respondents we could, that's all.
Okay, I just thought I'd throw it out there.
Yeah, okay.
No, Linda, like, good call, I, I agree with you, they, if we could put a non-binding thing on there just to get, take the temperature.
Right.
You know, in a context, hey, everybody. We're looking, we're staring down all these issues and we're looking at these major tax increases in that context. Do you still value the trooper the way that you did three years ago? Maybe they do. In which case, okay.
Hey Louise, you had something you might have asked?
Yeah, I did, on the, um, the mowing services. Um, humor me on this, but. Do we use people in town to mow the properties or do we contract that, that out?
Uh, so. The only thing that we use an out of town mowing service for. Is the actual athletic field. And we subcontract that to Hebron's Parks and Recs Director. Because they have a really good turf guy. Um, and there's an awful lot of art and science into maintaining a good athletic playing field. Um, and we were cutting that, using local contractors to cut that. And it was really problematic, um, we've done a much better job. For no other reason, they kept wrecking our sprinkler system, uh, by running over the heads, you know, which is expensive. Um, so we've subbed all of that out, you know, kind of en masse. And, and that budget includes, uh, both the turf itself. Um, so that, that's mowing, essentially irrigation, fertilization cycles done correctly. And they're taking care of the sprinkler systems now too.
Okay, and I assume they do this on a weekly basis as far as mowing?
Yes, the field is mowed weekly, um, during the high growing season. I mean, you're not mowing it every week in November, certainly, but during the, the high growth season, yeah, it's mowed once a week. And it's mowed in conjunction with the athletic groups that use the field. Um, so it's kind of, the goal is to mow it in such a way to, to maximize the. The use for the teams that play on it. And part of that cost is offset, we do charge, we do have one, uh. You know, travel soccer team that uses that field extensively. And we charge them, they pay about half the total maintenance cost for that field gets borne by them. Um, so, so we're recouping about half of that, it's, it doesn't show up in that budget that's sits in the revenue. Uh, category, um, but, uh, but it is there.
Is there any rate, way to shave off any of that for the, the non-field? You know, like the, the, the town properties. Where instead of doing it once a week, they would do it once every other week, I don't know if you'd save a lot, but. I'm just looking to see if there's something that we can do to kind of reduce that budget, that part of the budget.
Yeah, so if you look at that budget, the vast majority of that is the cost of maintaining the field. Our regular mowing is like, I don't know, somewhere around three thousand bucks a year for the town, it's, the regular mowing is pretty cheap. Um, that mowing's, you know, the, the field itself is, is expensive, um. Yeah.
Is that field used a lot?
Say again?
Is that field used a lot?
Yeah, I mean, our biggest problem is we have scheduling issues with being able to get everybody in on the field. Um, yeah, and, and we've, we've had to kind of favor because we have the travel soccer team. That's paying for it, um, we have kind of preferentially allowed them to, to set when they want to use it. And fill everybody in, you know, around it. Um, but yeah, that, that's. That's a really heavily used field, that's, that's, I think, probably. I would say that field is probably at the limit of good use and the thing that saves us. Is that for a lot of the smaller kids, they play on a reduced size field. So, that field accommodates essentially three teams at once during peak, peak practice.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Eric, if I can, uh, uh, to go a little further with Louise's question. Um, you take like, what, what town properties does Andover Landscape and do? For you, oh, they, for you?
Uh, they do, I think they do the town hall, the museum. They do all the outer areas at the athletic fields. I, I don't want them on the field itself, but Hebron's not gonna mow all the back areas and stuff like that.
Right.
Um, and I think they do. Um, I have a list somewhere, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
It, it took us long enough to get. The, uh, the school, the town hall, the fire station. And the library into one vendor for, uh, crack filling, sealing and line painting. Uh, when it's due for all, all of the facilities, uh, that goes out to bid. Uh, you know, to, to, to various contractors and they, they do everything at once on a schedule. And now you get the school has their own custodian and all their own equipment to mow just the school. You have Andover Landscaping mowing the town office building. Uh, we use Sears and Son, uh, from town at the fire station, uh, does a fantastic job. And he, he's been trying forever to, uh, you know, have the town go to bid on all of the other, you know, the other town buildings. Um, you know, and I'm sure, I'm sure Matt Cordner would also, uh, sub- submit a proposal for that. Um, and then you have, uh, uh, like you said, you got, you got even Public Works doing just the field part. Um, it, it, I think it's time that we get every, you know, say one vendor. Uh, whether you, whether you bid it yearly or bid it. Uh, whether you, whether you bid it yearly or bid it, you know, every other year. Um, to handle, you know, one shot, I think we get a much better deal. Right now, Louise, uh, each individual board or commissioner are paying for the mowing. You know, we're, we're paying it out of the fire commission budget. The school's paying for their custodian to work overtime usually to mow, mow the fit, the, uh, the, the grounds there. And then of course, we're paying Andover Landscaping to mow the rest of the town. So, uh, I think that, I, I agree that, that's, I, I personally think that should be reeled in, just like we did the, uh, the, the ceiling.
So why aren't the, um, the town, like the people taking care of the roads? Doing the mowing as well, instead of using it land, Andover Landscaping?
They, 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 they talked about that and they, they don't really have the personnel to do what they're doing now and, 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 and add on to that, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, nor do they have the equipment for that. I mean, we do have one mower that can do finish mowing. Uh, a smaller one, but it's really slow compared to what a landscaping company does. Um, and I mean, if, if you take mowing. You know, we basically, for. Lack of a better term, employ one guy full-time, just mowing sides of roads. Um, and, you know, trailside. Um, so, but that, that's a completely different specialized mowing. You know, we've looked into that, you know, and I thought one of the possibilities would be. To see whether we could get, you know, the, make some kind of deal with the, the school to use the cust- custodian to run around and mow everything. Um, because they're not, you know, working as hard in the summer. But now we need a vehicle to move that thing around. Um, cause the school doesn't have any transportation vehicles. Um, you know, I, I do agree that that's something we should run out with. We should rebid that um, on a townwide basis. Um, you know, it's gonna come with some, some heartburn because neither the fire department nor, nor the library wants to give up their. You know, the company they have, cause the library uses Ron's Landscaping. Um, you know, but I, I do agree that's something that at some point we need to bid out as one combined entity. I would agree with that. It's just, it's, that's low enough cost that it's kind of down my priority list a bit. But should be developed, should be looked at. I would agree with that.
Other questions or comments, ideas?
Carding costs, let's, let's look at those carding costs again at the transfer station. That's a, that's a hefty bill yearly. To have Willie Waste come up and pick up our, our containers and bring them back and forth. Again, I, I, uh, I'm all for getting our own compacted truck and having our own highway crew drive it. Uh, once or twice a week down to Willamette. Just, I, I think the cost would, uh, number one, the, the, the savings we would pay for the truck itself. Even starting up with it, with a used one like the other towns did. And then, uh, you know, and then have our own driver take it, take the, the, the containers back and forth, uh, twice a week. Those, 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 those carding costs are expensive. So, just another thing to look at.
They're so high, we could have another employee?
No, I'll talk about another employee. We, we have, we have four employees that, that can drive the truck right now. It, it, and, and I'm just going along on the basis of what town of Hebron did, what the town of Marlboro has done for a long time. Is they purchased their own carding truck. Uh, Hebron, when, when Andy Tierney, the town, the town manager up there did it, he bought a used one at auction. And, and, and they're, one of their drivers off the public works crew takes that, the, all their containers from their transfer station. Uh, down to Willie Waste and, and, and dumps them and brings them back and, and drops them. And that's only twice a week, you know, for probably a hour or two turnaround to, to, to take all the containers down there and back twice a week, so. Um, it would pay for itself in the long run.
Yeah.
Not sure I agree with you on that one.
I'm sure, I know, I know you don't, that's okay.
Um, I, I think it would take up more time than you think. Because on average, we're swapping out either four or five dumpsters. Uh. You know, twice a week. So on average, we're, we're running somewhere between eight and ten tips a week total. Between bulky metal, um, recycling and household. Um, and ten trips a week. You know, that's, you're not doing a round trip in less than forty-five minutes.
You're, you're, you're telling me right now that, that Willie, uh, Willie Waste is doing ten trips a week from our transfer station?
Yeah, right about, yeah.
Uh, I, I'd have to see the, I'd have to see that. I find that hard to believe.
Eight at least, sure.
Okay, we, we've already reduced to. So.
Oh, I, I did say four to five twice a week.
It's got, you, you, you know, the bottom line is you have to save money in the long run. Just a, just a thought.
So all we're talking about.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Going once? Going twice? All right, if there's no objection from the rest of the board, I, I think we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is to. Item three C, which is to schedule additional budget workshops. Um, we currently have a budget special meeting scheduled for March seventeenth, two weeks from tonight. Um, how does the board feel about that schedule? Is that gonna be enough? Do we sit on that right now or decide we wanna add more?
I think we'll probably have to have at least another one after that, I would think. There's no way we're gonna get it all done next week.
Agreed. Um, what's our schedule? Remind me, where, uh, when do we have to go to try to get things to town meeting?
Town meeting has to happen the first ten days of May.
Yeah.
May.
Yeah.
All right, so we have March and April, basically.
Correct. Last year, I don't think we finished up until the last week of April, right?
Oh, last year. I don't know that we want last year to be the, uh. The way we run things. Um. So we, in April, we have the seventh, the fourteenth, the twenty-first, and the twenty-eighth. Four Wednesdays. I, I, I'm just throwing Mondays, Wednesdays out there, cause I know they work for me. I, I know. Other people may have other, uh, takes, but, um. Personally, the question I would have is, if we wanna have, if we wanna schedule additional meetings. What are we responding to? Is there some new information that's gonna come out between now and said meeting? That allows us to do something?
I'm guessing not. Um, you know, I'm, I'm totally okay with just sitting where we are with the seventeenth and then we can reschedule, add another meeting on the seventeenth. Or when I'm making progress, we can add two meetings, which is.
Yeah, I'm with you. I, I think I'm with you on that. I, I think we need. I, i- if we're getting, if, if we know we're getting a, a pile of information prior to the tenth. Then we could schedule a special meeting, but if we're not, then there's no point.
I think we're gonna need a meeting to talk about the education budget, AES. And then if we go back to AES with a reduced number, we're gonna have to allow them time to come back with a revision, right?
True.
So that's.
An option.
An option. I mean, we're gonna come back, we're gonna say, you can have, you know, X less than what you want. And then they gotta come back to us with a new number. For us to finish the budget, right? So.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Does, so, does the Board of Finance want to do the same? Is your intention to, to make any recommendations to the RAM board or leave that alone at this point?
Hmm. Uh, have we in the past actually formally? I think maybe once we did. Said something to RAM. And tell them we thought they were wrong. Um. Where are they at this year? I'm sorry, somebody remind me. What's their overall? I know, I understand our percentage dropped, but. What's the? Total? What's, what do they actually ask for?
Five point, five point two million.
Yeah.
Five point two million, which is what, what is the percentage increase?
Half a percent down.
Well, that's, that's our allocation. More to the point, their, their per student increases, you know, it's, it's an increase. It's, it's, their expenditures are very high per capita. I think that's really the point that Eric has been making.
No, that, that's just it. Uh, I'm not asking about our contribution amount, cause our amount is just a formula. We got hammered three years in a row. Because we had a higher percentage of students in their student body and we just sucked that up and we dealt with it. So this year, uh, it just so happens that the worm has turned. And we have a lower percentage, but that's not really my question. My question is. You know, their percentage increase overall, because, yeah, okay. Maybe we're negative one percent, but we could be negative three if their budget was more responsible. Who knows?
Last time when that, when the superintendent did his presentation to us at the Board of Selectmen meeting? Was he talking like a, I think he was talking about two and a half percent, wasn't that their overall budget increase at that point in time? I don't know what it ended up at, cause it wasn't finalized.
After they rolled in, uh, what they over-expended from last year and used it to offset the rate. Their budget increase for Andover has to be somewhere around, uh. Their, their budget should have been up about one and a half percent. Um, and they lost somewhere around ninety students, something like that. So if you wanna, here, let me share a screen for a sec, so. Oh, Amanda, can you allow me to share a screen? Okay.
Done.
All right.
Yeah, there we go.
So, there's, if, if you look at it, um, that's. Uh, Andover, Hebron, Marlboro, RAM relative to inflation, um, and cost per student. And that's, uh, essentially what I would say as gross costs. In other words, that's not how the state calculates the costs. That is the total budget for the school. You know, divided by the number of students going to the school, which to me is your, your essentially true cost.
Right, it, it, it doesn't allow you to hide anything. I- if your total budget is divided by hundred students, that's the answer. And it doesn't let you hide something in some. You know, weird little bu- budget line item that doesn't count somehow.
Right.
So, uh, I have a question.
Sure.
I'm looking at the graph. And there's, there's something weird going on with this graph.
But you, you're missing data for the third year, three years ago for RAM and that's, that's causing a discontinuity there.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't have all the data. I mean, it took me forever to track down these town by town and, you know, and come up with them. A lot of this stuff I took. Um, yeah, yeah, so.
Okay.
You, you could average, you could probably average the, those two years, the year preceding and the year after and come up with some reasonable curve.
Yeah, you would, you would put a little dash line there and you could see how it could link up.
But, you know, the point, the point is it's, it's gotten really high.
Clearly, well above inflation. We all know this.
And, and, you know, and I thought we were closer to twenty-six thousand coming up on there. Or is that the current budget, Eric?
Well, I mean, that, that's the current budget, but the other thing to consider is that. This is the, the, uh. The only number that I can access, which is, cause these are derived from budgets. These don't take into account, like, the money AES gets in from grants and stuff like that, which never hits the town budget in any way, shape, or form. Um, those aren't represented here. So the, the actual cost for RAM and for AES is higher. Um, and this is in all cases, I think, including.
You, you mean the amount they spend.
Correct.
Versus the cost to the towns.
Correct, so I'm reflecting the costs to taxpayers here, not necessarily the total budget. Cause I don't necessarily know for every, every town, every school, I don't know what all their, you know, grants and all the other expense. You know, all the other income streams they have. I only know what they report in their budget.
The salient point really ends up being the cost of the town.
Right, yep.
So, I mean, you can still graph that if you have that data, it's a good, but. So, you know, to, to, to answer your question, Eric, and I'm not sure that, you know, I can answer on behalf of the board, but, you know, I think that it is. Behooves us to make some statement. I know you've been trying to get us to do that jointly with the Board of Selectmen for a while. Uh, you've suggested on at least a couple of different occasions, so I think it does behoove us to do that. I'm not sure what the effect is gonna be in terms. You know, in terms of this budget year, um, how we can really affect that, but. We could be at a net zero increase and I still think it would behoove us to go to the RAM. Board of Ed and, and challenge a little bit the per pupil spending.
Yeah, I mean, if you think, if you think about it, RAM spending. You know, is three thousand dollars a year higher than the average in Connecticut. And Connecticut's the second most expensive school in the country. You know, it's three times the budget we would be looking at if we lived in Utah. Let's put it that way.
I mean, look, we don't live in Utah, but as somebody who.
Be careful about our comparisons there.
As somebody who grew up in Connecticut, uh, and grew up in a particularly affluent part of Connecticut, I grew up in Fairfield County. Which, you know, we call it the Gold Coast for a reason. Um, I think back, so we're region, what are we, region ten, guys?
Region eight.
Region eleven? Eight, sorry. I knew you were within one of nine. Why? Because I went to nine. Nine was my high school. And if you look at Easton Reading District nine. What you're gonna see is even more ridiculous expenditures. The flip side is, that's down there. That's on the Fairfield County side of things. The scary part is that we're even close to them.
Guys, I'm gonna suggest though, that we're, we're straying a little bit from. Again, our agenda topic.
Sorry, Mark.
It's not your, you know, if anybody, Eric's the one that brought it up. Um, you know, I think it was just kind of a, a fairly straightforward question about whether we wanna approach that and tag that in one of our meetings or some other mechanism. Um, I, I'm not sure what the effect is or what the, what, you know, how we do that with the best mechanism is. I do think that it would. Make sense to have some presence there, uh, at their meetings and, and discuss that. Not sure about the best way to do that. There is a, there is a public meeting on Monday, I believe. Uh, I wish they started a little later than six-thirty, but it is what it is, so, you know, it, it, it probably makes sense for. For us to talk about that or make a, you know, make some kind of statement out. I don't know if the Board of Selectmen wanna have that, you know, have a part of that also. But certainly as the Board of Finance, I'm willing to, uh, get involved in that more than I have, which is zero close to it, other than watching your couple of presentations, so. Um, but back to the agenda item at hand, which is, you know, additional. Do we want at this point to schedule additional meetings to discuss and review the budget? Um, you know, I, I don't necessarily think we need to now. We have a meeting scheduled in two weeks. Uh, we could. Uh, just as readily, uh, use that opportunity to schedule additional meetings. Um, however, I would suggest that as Rob pointed out, Wednesday seemed to work, so if we can try to keep those a little clearer in our schedule. So that we do have the opportunity to, to kind of get together and, and do it in a timely manner. Uh, that, that would probably be prudent. Uh, but if somebody wants to make a motion to schedule meetings, I'm open to that as well.
Yeah, I agree with you that at this particular juncture, I don't think we necessarily need to add meetings to the calendar. We just kinda. Should keep an eye on it.
Any more discussion or emotion? Okay, hearing none, I think we will move on, um, to our next agenda item, which is public speak. Um, we do have members of the public attending. Um, Amanda, do you wanna? Go around and see if we have any public participation?
Yes, first we have Joanne Hubbard.
I will keep it, um, short and sweet. Um, I kinda wanna digest a lot of it. Have a tough job to do. Um, just. Generally, and not speaking to it, cause I know you're not speaking of the education budget, but you just brought it up right now. Um, I just hope that someone from the board of selectmen or even Eric will hold acting superintendent, um. Uh, to his word that he was gonna get back to the board with how they figured out that, um. Cost per student, because when any of us try to figure it out, it comes out to about twenty-seven thousand. Thirty million dollar budget. And as you guys all know, I do the homework and stuff like this, so if you looked at some other high schools with a lot more students. They're not even close to that figure, so. I, I just hope he gets back to someone with, um, he was gonna check with the state to find out how they, cause they publish, I think seventeen thousand per student. Um, so I just hold people accountable to what they say, you know, if they say they're gonna get back to you, and I haven't heard it yet. And so thank you too for, um, you know, questioning all the things. You're just doing what you have to do. Um, and, and kind of having the background. One of the things that you questioned earlier tonight on the town side, which. Amazing worker and she's a great lady, um, Carol, the town clerk. Um, I know she came forward with, um, the six percent request. And just in all the meetings I've heard, I just haven't heard the backup of when she didn't get raised, you know, and that might be nice to hear, so. There's been ample time to gather that, so I've heard different people question that, and I know, you know, the history of the town, so. And, you know, I'm sure she's very deserving and all of that, but. Things that I had said in the past is, um. Because it's a pandemic year, maybe go to, you know, give her. A big portion of it this year and then maybe say, because we're in a tough year, you know, we'll address it again next year, but that's all up to you. But I just like to, to have the facts behind it.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, good luck. I muted by mistake too quick, thank you.
Amanda?
Next up, we have Brian Briggs, and I believe that is all.
Uh, Jeff Murray's on also. We should be given an opportunity.
True. Jeff, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Perfect. Okay, um, Brian Briggs first, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I know you guys have a lot of tough decisions to make. Um, seven percent, even five percent during a coronavirus year is gonna be a lot for Andover residents. Who are already suffering from the pandemic, so there's gonna be a lot of tough decisions to make, and I kind of just would stress that. Try to limit the amount of money that you cut from the schools, cause they've had a lot of issues. I know. Andover's been in class, but they're gonna be a little bit far behind and the RAM students, I believe. Were hardly in school, so I, I would maybe look at some town stuff that you could come up with to cut. Pro- before, you know, you start cutting from the students. Um, some of these projects might have to wait a little bit. I don't know. Like, try to find things to cut, maybe cut everywhere, but I would try to go light on the school. That's. They, they could probably use a lot of that, that funding right about now. That's all I really have to say.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. Jeff Murray?
Hey, just one comment. Um, I know you guys talked about the, uh, transfer station sticker fees and everything. And that was brought up to the selectmen as well. Um. One thing that I found out is, it's Mira, which is the new Pira, is gonna be closing the trash energy plant in July of next year. And our tipping fees are gonna probably go through the roof. And that's what I suggested to Eric, is we revisit any fees for the transfer station in the following budget year, because we don't know what our. Tipping and our hauling fees are going to be, but I'm guessing they're gonna be substantially higher. That's it.
Jeff, is that the plant in Hartford?
Yes, it is. It's gonna be closed. Yep, it's closing July of next year, and we're, all our stuff's gonna be, everything's gonna be, have to haul, be hauled out of state.
Oh, hell, I didn't know that was happening. Thank you.
Yep, it's, you can look it up. If you look at trash energy plant closing, the, the statements are on. It's, uh, it used to be Pira, I think. Now they're, they're renaming it Mira. It's a new agency, so.
Yeah, it was the agency, yep.
That's, that's gonna be a huge issue we're gonna have to deal with next year. Because I'm, I'm afraid those fees are gonna go sky high, and we're probably gonna have to come up with some creative ways to keep our hauling costs down. So that's why I suggested Eric and the board, just we, we hold off until we see what happens there.
Gotcha. Thanks.
No problem.
Okay, yeah, there is no question that that's gonna have a direct impact on us. Um, in a little over a year from now. We've talked about it a little bit, you know, from the recycling perspective, but. But you're right. Um, and I don't, I don't think anybody's really come up with a solution so far. There aren't that many, you know, states are getting rid of their trashed energy plants. Um, I know a friend of mine lives in Maine and they just made a decision to close the one right where he is also. Um, you know, so it's, it's problematic from a, a bunch of different angles.
Interesting. All right, thanks. Nope, something else we'll have to deal with. Okay, I think that's, is that everyone, Amanda? Looks like it.
Looks like it.
Okay, so if we move on, if everyone's all set, um, our last agenda item is five, which is adjournment. Anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I shall move.
Okay, Rob's moved to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, I thought maybe everyone wanted to keep talking. All right, Rob moves to adjourn. Kurt seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's take a vote. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, looks like the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Uh, it's a good meeting, lots of discussions, a lot of work to do still, but, uh, appreciate these, uh, perseverance and, uh. We'll talk in a couple of weeks.
Sure, and if. Thanks, Mark, as usual.
Of anything.